Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain it at the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Okay. Excellent. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
President.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Palowski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Allen?
Here. Okay. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notices regarding hearings, comments, and closed session.
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or are needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed-session meeting minutes of June 24th, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Okay. On to reports.
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor? Sorry.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. On to reports. Mayor?
Thank you. Good evening. I hope everybody had a fantastic Fourth of July weekend. I want to thank the Department of Community Programs, and David Guida especially, the Department of Public Works, and our police and fire departments, and our sponsor Bristol Myers Squibb for making the Fourth of July another spectacular celebration. I want to remind everybody, Screen on the Green begins this Thursday and will take place on Thursdays during July and August. And Hot Summer Nights concerts will begin next Tuesday and continue on Tuesdays during July and August as well. Community Night for nonprofits will be July 23rd, which is Tuesday. Nonprofits who would like to participate can sign up online on the DCP website, or call or email David Guida at (908) 277-2932, or email is DGUIDAJR@cityofsummit.org. These events are a great way to connect with neighbors and friends. Bring a chair, bring a blanket, sit and enjoy. That's all I have.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. One emerging issue that I would actually, I'm going to kick over to Director Schrager. We had a couple water main breaks over the last week, and I just wanted to have Director Schrager give us an update.
Yes. Over the last few, really over the last few months, there's been several water main breaks, which is owned and operated by New Jersey American Water in the area of Montrose, in particular between Lowell and Webster Avenues. We have been in communication with New Jersey American Water. They don't have a specific reason for why the main keeps breaking, but you can assume it's just a very old main. It does highlight America's ongoing struggle with aging infrastructure. They will have crews out there tonight beginning some prep work to replace that main between Webster and Lowell. And additionally, they'll be doing a hydrant in that intersection in the next few weeks. And then they are looking the next year or two to try to do more in that whole area because that is an area that has had a fair amount of water main breaks and is the older infrastructure. But we are in touch with them. They did ask to remind anyone who is a customer of NJAW to go online and just make sure your contact information, email, and phone numbers are updated because that's how they'll reach out to you with service interruptions and any other information.
Excellent. Thank you. I know Councilwoman Hamlet, you went there and spoke with one of the residents. Was there anything you wanted to add?
I learned more about water main breaks than I probably would like to ever know. But I do think it's interesting that there are four or five in the last five weeks, and I know it is because of rising temperatures. And I think that the water line there is from 1924. Don't quote me, but I think it's, my only discussion with Director Schrager today was I really want to make sure they understand that we've had four to five in the last five weeks. And as I look down that road, I just want to make sure it's not happening in the next three to four weeks. And I know we'll talk more about that tomorrow. So, thank you for your hard work on that.
Yep. Okay. Thanks. Okay. Historical minute. Councilman Palowski.
Thank you, Council President. So, school's out, means we don't really have any volunteers to do these, but I will try to do one on my own. I have been, so everybody knows how great our Free Public Library is, and their website is pretty fantastic, too. If you want to learn what was happening on your street in the 1920s, you can look it up. And you'll see in the Herald, you know, if you can do a search for your street. What I've been fascinated with are the yearbooks. They have every yearbook through 2018, and I'm going to see when they're going to be updating the rest. But you go through it and you see, you see names come up repeatedly. Badgley, Genualdi, Caparoso. And just, you know, I don't even know that I ever really read my own yearbooks, you know, front to back, but you see the time and the care that was, that was put into these. One that caught my eye was 1942, which was, of course, was right after Pearl Harbor. And you see that some of its own, Robert Thrombley was a Navy radio host on the Oklahoma, and he died that day, and they did a dedication memorial. So, I just want to encourage everybody who's interested in Summit history to take a look at our library. And geez, I mean, pretty much all of Summit's history is right there at the click of a mouse. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Tonight, we had, if everybody could turn off their cellphones, I would truly appreciate it, just so that we're not disrupting. No beeps or rings. The president, hopefully, is there anyone from Pilgrim Church tonight? I just want to make sure. So unfortunately, we had a cancellation. We had to move it to July 30th. So I apologize. Our proclamation for Pilgrim is going to be in a couple weeks from now. So, okay. We had a small emergency. So, okay. I'm going to switch this around a little bit. We do have a safety presentation tonight. I'm going to actually just do HTTV first, if you don't mind, only because they have some interns here tonight. So HTTV, I actually have President John Ceruta here, and Amanda Olson is right there. There you are. You guys can come on up. Tonight, we have HTTV joining us. And are you coming up too, John?
No.
No? Okay. I love your dress. And Amanda is HTTV Station Manager, so if you're all watching from home on the broadcast station, we have HTTV to thank. For nearly 50 years, HTTV has been a force behind filming our council meetings, zoning and planning meetings, and many other government and community shows. Last meeting, the City of Summit recognized these amazing interns that we have at City Hall, and it made me realize that every summer, HTTV also brings in anywhere from four to 10 interns over the summer and many throughout the year, which provides an opportunity for local students getting a degree in film, communication, or broadcast to get a real-life experience at a local television station. I would say that it rivals New York City. You can do everything in Summit that you do in the city. So, the City of Summit funds the station through licensing fees that are collected from Comcast and Verizon, and as we know, local programming is critical to local government. So I asked Amanda to come with her interns tonight so we could, so she could highlight what the station does with our community, recognize the work that they do, and also, I wrote this, excuse me, recognize the work they do, and also, oh, and also have the interns just talk a little bit about their unique opportunities and how HTTV has changed their life. Amanda?
Thank you, Lisa. So hi, my name is Amanda Olson DeZulie. I am the Station Manager at HTTV, and I've been with the company for almost 10 years. Over these years, I've had over 45 interns come through the station, and many in which have gone onto successful-
Amanda, just lean into the microphone.
Oh, even more so?
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Okay. Over the years, I've had over 45 interns come through the station, in which many of them have gone on to successful media and communication careers. For example, students have gone off to work at MLB, News 12 New Jersey, NFL, NBA, CNBC, ABC, Fox, NBC, ESPN, and many more. HTTV has provided local programming for almost 50 years, as Lisa said, in Summit, and we're still going strong. We record the planning board meetings, the zoning board meetings, the council meetings, PSAs, and city shows. We also film Summit events and activities on the Village Green, SDIs meet the merchants, and various events downtown. Tonight, I have three interns who are at the station this summer and one former intern. Without these interns, much of the work we do could not happen. Thank you for recognizing us tonight, and it would be great if these interns could say a few short words. But before I do get into these guys coming up, I would like to tell you guys, the council, about a recent interaction I had with a previous intern. Okay. A previous intern, Olivia. Olivia was an intern at HTTV in 2019. A couple of years later, she graduated from Montclair State University, and we hired her as our graphic designer slash animator slash production assistant. About two years ago, Olivia left HTTV for a full-time position at MLB. Last month, I saw that she won an Emmy for her work. Olivia mess, yes, it's really impressive. Olivia messaged me saying the following: "Thank you so much for everything you've done for me. I wouldn't have gotten to this point without the opportunities and skills you've given me at HTTV." Olivia is just one of the many success stories I've heard from our former interns. And now, I'd like to introduce you, our current ones.
Okay. Thank you. Hi.
Hello. I'm Lance Foulay. I'm a Rising Junior at Montclair State University. And my favorite part about being here at HTTV is I can just be very creatively ambitious when I'm there. I recently produced a segment called "The Lunch Break." It's a show we have here at HTTV. And I was able to be very involved in every segment of creating a show like that. And through creating it, I made a lot of mistakes, which are lessons that I'll learn and take throughout my entire career. And for that, I'll always be grateful for HTTV. So, thank you.
Thank you. I guess we should clap for each one of them.
Hi, my name is Freddie Goodman. I'm a recent graduate of Temple University. And one thing that I really enjoy about the internship is the ability to sharpen my skills as a filmmaker. Coming from film, I wasn't privy to all the techniques that went into television. And it's been great to hone those skills, and I'll use them for the rest of my life. Some of those skills include executing ideas coherently and concisely in a timely manner, kind of like what I'm doing right now. And this has helped streamline my creative process, not just in the film, but in all my ventures, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Charlie Zucker. I'm a Rising software, soph, sophomore at Northwestern University and an intern at HTTV. I'm pretty new to the production process, but my favorite part about this internship is its emphasis on collaboration and communication with other members of the team, which is such an important skill in all facets of life. Having to actively listen to and trust others toward a collective goal is prevalent in the production process, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have people hear out my ideas, but also to help others develop their ideas in a real-world setting.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Freddie.
I got to raise this a little bit. Hi, my name is Reed Christman, and I just graduated from the NYU Film and Television Program, one of the most prestigious film programs across the entire country. And the only reason I was able to apply to NYU in the first place was because of this internship. It was an opportunity for me to learn the basics of filming and editing, to start working in the industry, and to start putting together the portfolio that I needed to get accepted. This program gave me the freedom to make my own content in service of HTTV, which is a freedom you cannot find at any other internship, and that I think really pushed me and helped me grow. I'm so thankful for that chance, and I think it's only fitting that HTTV is being recognized tonight because I owe all of my future success to them. Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's out. Oh, you know what? Can we take a picture?
Quick photo of you guys.
Yeah. That'd be great. Yeah. John, you should come take a picture. Yep. I'll have the mayor with you. I just want to say, full disclosure, I've been on the board for some time. I don't get to do as much with HTTV since I've been on council. It's, but it really fills my heart that when I hear these kids and how much it's changed their life, and these are the stories that continually happen every year, I know we're doing something right. So I just want to say thank you again. So, thanks. Okay. You guys are more than welcome to stay, but I don't know if you want to, our feelings won't be hurt. Yeah, okay. All right. Excellent. Next one is the safety presentation that I'm going to have Councilman Boyer introduce our presenter.
Thank you, Council President. So, a couple of months ago, I was watching the Millburn Public Safety Information Session that took place on April 17th, 2024. And during that session, the police highlighted a remarkable initiative where one resident, Raquel Deperna, organized her neighborhoods to start a Neighborhood Watch program in the Poets Section of Millburn. Raquel then reached out to the police for assistance and successfully launched the program. I was really impressed by Raquel's grassroots effort, and I thought it would be valuable for her to speak to our residents about the benefits of the Neighborhood Watch program. While I appreciate con prevention efforts, what truly stood out to me was the sense of community and unity that this program fosters. It's about getting to know your neighbors and building a stronger, more connected community. Thank you for coming, Raquel. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you so much for having me here. I didn't expect such a big crowd, but I'm super happy for the engagement, for whatever.
They all came for you.
I know, I know. Thank you so much. So, I, you know, I wanted to just sort of take the time to say that the Neighborhood Watch, just in its origin, it was intended to be a community-based program that increased safety and security, but it's not run by the town and it's not run by the police. It's really run by the residents, and that's the key factor here. It is one with collaboration from the town and support from the town and collaboration from the PD, and that's what makes it really successful amongst lots of engaged people. So, like, a year and a half ago, I, the crime has been ticking up, I think we can all agree, hasn't, hasn't been trending down. And there was a car stolen at like 8:00 AM, right next to, where I was waiting for my kids to the bus stop. I missed it. Somehow they got the car and, ow, and I missed the whole scene. But we, and many of you may have, just a little text chain where we text the neighbors, like, oh, just see what happened, but limitations on text. And so I decided to take my husband's little chat and turn it into a little larger-scale initiative in the neighborhood. So I got like 300 people engaged within two minutes, and went down to the crime meeting that the Millburn Police were doing and said, hey, I have this group. What do I do with them? I don't know. How can we help you? And I think coming from the sense of, we need this, we need that, we're not really asking for that. We're really coming and saying, how do we help you? What are we partnering with you? How do we take this group and leverage it for good? So they said, start a Neighborhood Watch. And I thought, that's super old-school. Does that exist? And they said, no. And I said, okay. And then off we were. I found some engaged people. I started a meeting, came up with some initiatives and agenda items, and I got some really engaged neighbors to jump in and help. And so, we're about a year and a half in, we're at 1,500 members. I scaled it from one watch in my neighborhood to six watches across the town. It's really divvied by school, but as, just zone-wise, just to make things simple, but some, some zones are a little bigger, and as things got bigger, they got split up a little more. So, that was the way we got started. They vary in maturity. Some of the groups are small and some are big. The biggest one is Poets because it started first, and it's very organized and fully vetted. So at first, they weren't vetted, but everyone is vetted. We know you live in the neighborhood, you've registered, and that makes us all feel safe in that environment. So, that's our WhatsApp group. There is an email DL as well, but the WhatsApp group is really for real-time stuff, and the emails are for, you know, things that are not so time-sensitive. So, goals. Number one, Councilman Boyer said it, building community, it doesn't work without the community. It's really about looking out for each other, having a shared sense of community, shared experiences. That brings us together. It's been pretty phenomenal. Preventing crime is a goal. We're sort of trying to deter or increase vigilance. Strengthen our relationship with the Millburn Police. It's a two-way communication now instead of a one or, you know, one from each side, but now we're talking, there's trust and support. And then to arm residents with information. So I know that Summit has done some streaming sessions as well. We have, we are also doing, like, on the ground, the police are working with us, and we're bringing in residents, and they're talking one-on-one, asking questions, which has been very helpful. I think also what's been helpful is, it's really a positive environment. Everyone's very supportive. We all, we all come together and lead by example, and we're looking for proactive solutions. We're not making demands, but we do have suggestions, and we are asking questions, and the police are partnering with us to make some of those things come to life, and that's been really rewarding. So we're here to do our part, and so how do the residents get involved? There's formal roles, core teams and local leaders and local voices. Some neighborhoods that are more mature have block captains per street, and they bring everyone together during times of, you know, need, need in terms of like needing some help with footage and whatnot. We have, we're signaling that we're coordinating, probably doesn't do a heck of a lot, but we know, we're part of a group, and we have signs that we nail to the street with cameras above them and stickers, and we just want people to know when you come to that neighborhood, we are taking care of each other. We have a camera registration program where you can register your camera. If the Millburn Police need footage, they can access that. And then, you know, the way that all the other residents who aren't part of a formal role play into it is they're sharing their stories. So, there was a break-in, and there are unfortunately several. That person gets on, they share their story, we learn from that story, and then we get smarter and stronger, and we understand, maybe we need to put glass break in the back of our doors, and, you know, we learn how they're getting in and why. And it's a little more information than maybe the police can officially share, but we can share amongst ourselves, spread that across all the groups. We're getting educated, supporting, reporting suspicious activity, we're watching each other's homes, we're picking up each other's mail, and we are coordinating our angles of camera footage. Okay. So, the collaboration with the police and I would say the mayor and the town council really helped us get this kicked off. It is continued support that keeps it going. The police, like I said, they do information sessions, they're talking to us about what the trends are, how to protect your home, and it is really interactive, and that is the most benefit, I think, to the residents. We have direct access to ask them questions and share concerns, and, you know, we're starting to build that relationship and community. And then, you know, when we have suggestions, maybe it's town-related, maybe it's police-related, we can go to the Business Administrator from Millburn, and he's been really great about making things happen. And our Councilman Ben Stoller introduced me to Councilman Boyer, so again, the support continues. So I would, I would say that the residents and the police may get a success. What are the achievements? I think in two buckets of collaboration and building community. The collaboration, I think, tangibly, a lot of our, I don't want to say a lot, many of the calls that we've made have led to arrests, and that is, that has been good to hear. The camera footage that we're providing is helping to evolve investigations. We are sort of mapping out on a map, the car hit here, it got stolen, it hit here, it hit here, it hit here, then it went to that home. So we're really kind of working together on how we draw this out and try to pull footage from everybody. We are reducing call volume to the police because we are streamlining questions through the watch. And then also, the community is talking amongst each other. There's a suspicious car out there. Did any, is that your neighbor? Is that your Uber? Is that, who is that? If we don't know, we call it in. If somebody says, that's my babysitter, hold up, you know, we don't bother. So it saves some call volume. And then, you know, I think I impressed upon the two-way communication with the PD, but it's, there's something going on, we know there's going to be police presence, or we see the drones in the air, we know, we've been educated, we've got to stay inside and let the heat sensors do their work for whoever they're going after. So we've gotten all that education. Couple small success stories that we're proud of, and very early on, there was a, somebody pinged the group and said, hey, you know, a package was picked up at my door from this guy on a scooter. Is he a neighbor? Did the package get delivered to the wrong house? And then someone's like, no, but interesting, an Amex card got delivered to my door, I didn't order it. And then bam, like 50 people, like, me too, me too, me too. We realized, like, we put it together, the guy had ordered Amex cards to everyone's door and was following the metal truck, picking them up on a scooter. But like, if you didn't know that there was a package, and you wouldn't have known it was gone, you couldn't have figured out that there was fraud happening. It was really something we had to piece together, and then police came down, a few people lined up, took reports. It was very, much more organized. Somebody got their package stolen, it happened to be like a $3,000 iPhone, iPad package. We tracked the camera footage back to the main road, we saw we got dropped off, make and model of the car, we saw it went directly to that house. And what is the deduction there? Like, it was very targeted, and somebody knew that package was coming. So it helps when you call the police, you have a little bit of information to provide them. There was also a missing child sadly, and we were able to track our camera footage together. So some of our success stories that we're proud of as a community. So that's like, and then the second achievement, I think, is just fostering community. We know our neighbors, we've had some events, we have the sessions, we had a block party for Fourth of July, where we closed down the streets, and I met so many more people that I hadn't met. We trust each other, there's empathy and communication, and the mature neighborhoods, that's getting more active, and the ones that are growing, that we'll see that happen over time. But people talking to each other and taking care of each other, it's really just back to the basics, that's the key. And we've even found pets, and there were some missing pets that we tracked with all sorts of camera footage to help people. So I think the people I've talked to, they feel, I don't want to say people feel safer, but I think there's a sense of ease when you know what's happening. You know, we're asking questions, the police are responding, we know what's going on. So I think, and we know how to protect ourselves, so we're feeling a little more calm and connected in that, and that's very helpful. What's next for us? We're going to do some social events and like walk and talks with the police and try to build that connection a little bit more. We've been having ongoing information centers, and part of what's next for us, I hope, is we're here in Summit, and I'm hoping that Summit, I'm going to say Livingston, Springfield, the towns around us that our police partner with, it would be great if we could kind of start the same thing up and connect and share stories and try to help each other. So, you know, in conclusion, I just want to say that, you know, nothing is really possible without the engagement members of our community. There's power in many, we do it together, we work together, and we just, we're hoping that this can happen in other towns around us. Just huge thanks to Councilman Boyer for reaching out to me, and to your mayor and President Allen, thank you for your time in connecting with me, and that's it.
Thank you.
Raquel, thank you. I appreciate it. I know you want to get home, and you're a commute from New York and everything. This is really great. You know, this is truly a grassroots effort. You know, I like the idea that, you know, whoever is on council, you know, it's not another committee where you select somebody to lead it, right? These are the residents. This is independent from city control, you know, working with our police department and enhancing our community safety. I, I think that if you are interested, at some point we'll put something out in the city so that you can contact, call in and, you know, we can set you up with Raquel to figure out how to, how to get this started, if the residents are interested, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Raquel. Thank you, Councilman Boyer.
Okay. Are we all set on the timer?
Yep, we are.
Okay. All right, then we are going to move to public comments. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of of the public about issues that are not on tonight's agenda, business agenda. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement or has a question, please provide a copy to the city clerk at city clerk at cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers, please say your name, your home address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Also, if you could please just, if you're representing a, an organization, please identify the organization. If you come up and you are, oh, I said that. Only one speaker at a time on the floor, please. I'm actually just going to speak to you guys, there's a lot of people in this room tonight. And I assume I know what it's about, which is probably Juneteenth. I'm not going to, I'm going to reserve my opinion and a statement. But what I do want to say is, because I feel like the public comment is for our community. And just that, we are a community. There's a lot of passion in this room. And we want to be able to see each other at the grocery store, have our kids play sports together. We want to be able to not avoid each other if we see each other on the street. I would really ask that everybody allows each person to speak without interruption, without disruption and be respectful. So that's what I'm going to ask and I will gavel people if you're speaking while someone else is speaking. That goes for my dais and that goes for you. So I'm going to open up the public comment. Please say your name, your home address. Hold on one second, Reverend Williams, I can give you one sec, oh, you can come up, no, no, come up.
Speak into the podium.
Yep, and speak nice and clearly into the podium mic. Okay.
Reverend, Reverend Vernon Williams.
Oh, I get timed just by announcing my name?
Yes, it's okay.
Would you like me to start over?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. Reverend Vernon Williams, Fountain Baptist Church, Two Frost Court, Raritan Township. I stand tonight to respond to the false allegations leveled on the all volunteer planning committee for Juneteenth. We are a community made up of Summit residents and community leaders. I sat on the community as the representative of the Fountain Baptist Church. I have been a pastoral leader, working in Summit for 25 years, for the past 25 years. Fountain has been a religious institution in Summit for 126 years, working on many concerns and issues integral to the good of the city. The very chamber that we are sitting in are on the grounds of the old Fountain Baptist Church. Therefore, Fountain takes issue with anyone who would infer that our involvement in the Juneteenth planning was that of an outsider, a Jim Crow eritrope. This was done when Councilman Boyer stated in his interview to Fox News Digital, by the way, some of the people that didn't want me to speak, they're not from this town. The committee began work as early as September 2023. Development, a commemoration, a celebration that would be in keeping with recognition of how blacks were denied agency and dignity of self determination. At no time, Councilman Boyer bothered to attend any of our meetings. In February, committee members remember being asked if we were ready to talk about speakers. We informed the city's representative that we were not. We discussed three speakers for Juneteenth, a keynote speaker, the mayor, and possibly spoken word from high school teams. At no time did anyone consider Councilman Boyer. He was just simply not on our radar to invite to speak. Hence, we cannot rescind an invitation that we never extended. On June 18th, the planning committee learned of Councilman Boyer's request to speak. In conversations with President Allen, David Guida, and eventually Councilman Smallwood, we were informed that we had never extended an invitation, we informed that we never extended an invitation for Boyer to speak. The Juneteenth program was set and we followed a similar format as last year, namely, no councilman spoke, though the actual first African American Councilman, Susan Harrison, was still in office. It was then made clear to the volunteer committee that if city officials wanted to speak at the city event, they could. To this, we said multiple times, then you invite him. Oddly enough, he refused. Why is that? For us, Juneteenth was not to prevent nor add a platform for political grandstanding. To prevent this, we keep, we came up with a workable solution where we asked the entire council to speak. Thus, we invited the council to speak for 25 seconds and to the question, what does Juneteenth mean to you? Councilman Boyer spoke for almost two minutes, Councilman Vortan and Smallwood for less than 45 seconds. The issue is, Councilman Boyer believed he should have been the only council person invited to speak. We planned and delivered an event that the city of Summit can be proud of and that was void of any political grandstanding. The politics that have followed confirmed our suspicions. We made the right decision. Councilman Boyer, you've won the allow in your video interview with Fox News Digital, what my congregation thought of me? Well, wonder no more, because we are here en masse to let you know and the rest of the council to know that I have full support. For 126 years Fountain has been advocating for justice at Summit to make her place, this place, a better place for all of Summit residents.
Just your name, your home address, and if you're representing an organization.
My name is Johnny Rosser. 2914 Foxhole Road, Foxhole, New Jersey. And I am a member of Fountain Baptist Church. I'm a member of the Juneteenth Committee and have attended most of the meetings. My purpose for joining the committee was to help in the planning of the Summit Juneteenth Program. I have never been asked, nor have I asked any member of the Juneteenth Committee about their political affiliation. The meeting for the 2024 Summit Juneteenth Program started in the fall of 2023 and continued to June of 2024. The first mention I heard of Councilman Boyer's name was Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. The significance of Juneteenth is rooted in the Emancipation Proclamation, the Thirteenth Amendment, and Major General Gordon Granger's General Order Number Three. Juneteenth is a day of celebration for people of African American descent. The Emancipation Proclamation changed the status of enslaved African Americans in the Confederate States from enslaved to free. It is a shame that Summit's 2024 Juneteenth Day of Celebration is marred by one person's perception of political affiliation, platform, and agenda.
Do you want to email your statement? You can either email that, my address is in the agenda. Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm just going to make an announcement. If you have a statement and you don't have it, you can't turn it over and you want to email it, okay. But if you do, if anybody has a statement, you can always email it to the clerk, so just.
The address is in, in the agenda.
In the agenda, okay.
Hello, Janice McClary, 40 Ashwood Avenue, Summit, New Jersey. I just wanted to address also on the Juneteenth Event. I personally met with the mayor in May, a few weeks before the Juneteenth Event, asking if she would speak. And she mentioned that she would be away. And she said Lisa Allen or Delia Hamlet would be reaching out to us. At no time did she mention anything about Jamal Boyer. I never come to these meetings because I'm a mother and I'm always home with my kids, but I felt very deeply hurt by your statement because I've been a member here in this community since 2013 and have always worked really hard to be active in the community, bringing people together and your words heard. And you never reached out to us to say anything to us directly. You stated your, your opinion for the public. Just like you reached out to the Melbourne area about, hey, how do you have this neighborhood watch and you want to be so community oriented, reach out to us as well. We're the members of Summit, the Summit Community that you're serving, like you said, volunteering to serve. We're volunteering our time on this Juneteenth Committee. We would love the opportunity to speak with you in person and have you help us with the next Juneteenth Event. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Susan. You look familiar.
Hello, folks, how are you? I'm Susan Hairston. I'm the former councilwoman from Ward One. And I was a member of the Juneteenth Committee when it was first initiated. So I am here to set any record straight about a miss, any misunderstanding or mischaracterization of people on the committee. I can't say better than the woman who just spoke how disappointing and discouraging it is to have such a momentous occasion as Summit celebrating Juneteenth, to be marred in nonsensical, self-serving conversation. And Council President, I have to ask you to please ensure that this council keeps their eye on the whole community. It was, I was on that committee when it was initiated. David Guida, Betty Adams, and Reverend Harry Eld invited me to come and I was happy to participate in that. And I was happy to defer to the committee to ask them, what would you like me to speak about? This role of serving on city council is to serve the residents and to look out for the whole of the community. And I ask you to please ensure that that is the spirit in which this council takes action. Thank you.
You'll start it once and.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Monique Taylor, 167 Passaic Avenue. Fact, neither the Summit Interfaith Council nor the Anti-Racism Committee was involved in any capacity in the Juneteenth Committee. Fact, all Juneteenth Committee members either live, work, and/or worship here in Summit. Fact, Susan Hairston, Summit's first black council member since 1869, was an integral member of the first Juneteenth Committee in 2022 and as such spoke at Summit's first Juneteenth Celebration along with the mayor. Fact, none of the current common council assisted in the planning of Juneteenth 2024 and the mayor was invited to speak, similar to other Summit events. Fact, the Juneteenth Committee met frequently from September 2023 to June 2024 and not one person, including any member of council, mentioned to the committee that Councilman Boyer was going to speak at the event until June 18th. Fact, in February, I personally attended meetings with Boyer, Fagan, Allen, and Smallwood, some of you at least twice, and met with the CPPS Committee in March. No mention of Boyer speaking. Fact, the Juneteenth Committee chose Reverend Dr. Kirk A. Johnson, a member of Price Church Summit, as the keynote in early March. Fact, I spoke with Lisa Allen on June 13th. Why didn't you mention Boyer to me? Fact, June 20th, the Juneteenth Committee decided to allow all members of council to speak to keep the commemoration nonpartisan, requesting that each speaker keep their remarks to 45 seconds. Fact, Jamel Boyer spoke for twice as long as any other council member, including the mayor's stand-in Lisa Allen. He was the only person that was asked to assist with the flag raising. Fact, the members of the Juneteenth Committee did not discriminate against Boyer. He was expressing feelings, not facts, when he claimed, they don't consider me black. It's obvious. Fact, Boyer has repeatedly stated that there is no widespread racism in Summit. If it's so important to give the second black council member the spotlight, can anyone tell us if he was invited to speak for Memorial Day or the Fourth of July? Fact, Juneteenth is about liberation and freedom of blacks to choose our own path. We don't live in an antebellum period piece where the enslavers get a black preacher, likely enslaved himself, to exhort the virtues of slavery to the enslaved people. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Monique, thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Ma'am.
Monique.
Your, your.
Can you cut her microphone? Summit celebrated Juneteenth, an amazing event of music. You heard me. Ms. Taylor, your three minutes were up.
Your time is up, ma'am.
From the esteemed speaker we chose. We didn't choose.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Ms. Taylor, you're taking time away from other public speakers.
No, sorry.
I'm going to ask that everybody be respectful. There is, I understand that, Monique. To the Summit Interfaith Council and the Anti-Racism Committee, you and Boyer both. That is the respectful thing to do. You want to be respectful, do that.
Ma'am, you can't call out from the audience, you had your three minutes.
Don't talk to me. It's okay, Matt, I got it, I got it. When I, I'm not, I'm, I do not want to take the public time, but I am going to tell you something because there are some missed facts in there. When I met with Amy, because I was, I said this, because the mayor was not going to be in town and Delia, Councilwoman Hamlet, was not going to be in town. I met with you, Monique, and Amy, and Trevor.
Yes.
And I didn't know that Jamel wasn't speaking because in January, I had asked city staff and Councilman Smallwood to make sure that Councilman Boyer was on the committee and that he would be speaking. Where is it written?
Ma'am, there's no cross dialogue.
Monique. Where is it written? I have a bag. Monique, I am speaking. Where is it written? You don't have it, you guys are lying. She's just being argumentative and I think. I know.
Yes.
No, no, I just, I want it.
Address the, the.
Oh, yeah, the council, so, anyway. So I did not know that Jamel was speaking at that time. And it was three days before the event that I walked into our communicate, our chief communication officer's office and her and another employee were there talking about how the Interfaith Council didn't want Jamel to speak. And I said, what do you mean, he's not speaking? I thought he was going to speak. And she said, no. And we, a conversation pursued and I said, well, that's not appropriate. Jamel is our elected black councilman. It is Juneteenth, it is about liberation and it is about freedom. And I can't imagine that this would not happen, that this would actually happen, it must be a misunderstanding. So I called, we scheduled a call. Reverend Williams, I think Monique was on there, David, me, I can't remember who else was on the first call. And the statement was that they didn't want Jamel to speak. Yeah, you said, yes.
We said we'd never invited him. That's exactly what we said.
And I said, and I said, he is a councilman and I don't understand why on Juneteenth you wouldn't want him to speak and you said.
You didn't invite him?
Yes, so.
Guys, we have to stop the cross dialogue.
Reverend, Reverend, hold on, okay, please, guys, guys, listen, listen, listen. There's no need for shut up in this room. No need, no need for that.
Reverend Williams.
Stop.
Reverend Williams, come on, man, you're a reverend, right?
Stop, stop, stop.
Come on, no, but I'm saying.
Guys, I, I, this is my council room and I will speak.
For three minutes?
Excuse me.
Where's your three minutes?
I am trying to explain the story. So when we spoke on the phone, there's no me inviting him, I said, I, he's going to speak. And you said, if he speaks, we're going to respond. And I said, that is disrespectful. He's a councilman, why would you respond if he just has a couple minutes at the podium, at the, on the stage? And so I said, you know what, we ended the call, I was like, let me talk to our administrator. The next day you called and you said, we're going to compromise. We're going to give everybody, everybody on the dais 45 seconds. And I said, I can't make that decision, I got to go back to our administrator. And at that point, our administrator said, that's silly to, to make every council person be limited to 45 seconds. So when we had the second call, I said to you, I'm like, no, I actually like time limits. Running a council meeting, I do like time limits.
Running a council meeting, I do like time limits. And I was like, but we're, we really don't want to do the 45 seconds. And honestly, half of our Council members aren't even around. Why can't we just let Jamel speak? And you said, we're going to have comments for him. And this was the, we had three conversations. The three conversations were that, fine, have him come up on stage, but we're going to, we're going to comment if you let him speak. And I said, as a Black sitting Councilman for Juneteenth, I am simply asking, a city-run event does not get made into some kind of circus. And here we are, feeling like it's a bit of a circus. But, but, here's the confusion, and this is, you and I have had this conversation. You were representing Fountain Baptist, but at the time, and I've spoken to Reverend Tanner about this, you are a member of the Interfaith Council. Just, you're a member of the Interfaith Council, and Monique is a, is a member of the Anti-Racism Committee. And so there's, there is confusion sometimes on who you represent. And so I recognize, Reverend Tanner, that you and Monique were not, not Reverend Tanner, Reverend Williams and Monique were not acting in the capacity of interfaith. And I just want to read something for you because there were a few missteps on everybody's part. And the fact is, is that there were conversations that we were told, and it's not in writing, that Jamel was told that he could speak in February. And I said to you, and I implored you, I'm like, this is a city event. Why are we saying to a sitting Councilman that he can't get up on stage on Juneteenth? A duly-elected Councilman who won to represent, I mean, Juneteenth, freedom and liberation, Councilman Boyer as Councilwoman Hairston, this is a moment where is the ultimate freedom in government. A man is elected and a woman, a Black man and a Black woman were elected to represent the whole of our community, all of us. That is like the ultimate. And to me, I thought, I said to you, I was like, this is a celebration. Why, why are we excluding him? That was the frustration. And to say that you were going to mock him or respond to, well, respond to him, mock is my word, it's-
I lied.
Wait. You guys said that you were going to respond, and you didn't want him grandstanding. So, hold on.
He's done enough grandstanding on Fox News.
So the mission of the Interfaith Council is to foster mutual understanding and respect and encourage dialogue in order to appreciate the unique contributions of various perspectives. That's what, that's what Juneteenth was about. That's what all our events are about. And I just wanted it to be part of a celebration. And I'm sorry that this is where we're at. But to exclude him and to say that, that Councilman Boyer was going to grandstand and say all the wrong things on stage and not celebrate him, all of us, it, to me, this, he is a good man.
He's not.
Jamel, okay, I, no, I will not accept that. Jamel, Councilman-
He was a man who apologized to the Interfaith Council and the Anti-Racism Committee.
Hold on. Councilman Boyer moved here from an urban city and grew up in affordable housing. Hold on. He, no, no. He has lived in Summit his entire, he lived in affordable housing, he grew up in Summit, and he ran for office. I will defend him, and I will stand here and say that he is a good man. And I am willing to, to help, okay, go ahead.
Oh, no, three, Council President. Can we, can we finish with open?
Yes, on public comment. So I just wanted to say, but I'm willing to do the work that it takes, so.
Andrew Miles, Forest Service, Franklin Park, Jersey, 129 Richland Court. All right, so if you're a person of color who has had the good fortune of not having any kind of experiences of racism in Summit or whatever, okay, congratulations, fine, but that's not necessarily everyone's experience. In my case, a long time ago, probably about nine years ago, I were canvassing in Summit with two other Black people. At the time, I was looking for a certain address, couldn't find it at the time. And then some older white gentleman was jogging down the driveway, about to go on his afternoon jog, whatever. And then I was like, excuse me, sir, can you tell me where so-and-so address is? He was like, I think you're in the wrong neighborhood. I was like, excuse me? I could have gone off on him, I could have gotten really angry at him. I was like, I'm not going to right now because I have a job to do. I asked him again, where is so-and-so address? I think you're in the wrong neighborhood. So after that, I did find it, but then after we, the three of us got back inside a car, one of my colleagues told me, I think he sounds like the KKK. I was like, you might not be wrong about that. So you can't be blinded by eyesight. Just because you haven't seen something or experienced something, can't understand it or can't explain it, doesn't mean it doesn't exist, doesn't mean it didn't happen, doesn't mean it isn't real. Don't be blinded by eyesight. Thank you.
Council, Council President, just really, really quickly. I think, you know, I keep hearing this over and over again about me saying there's no racism, right?
Excuse me. They can't hear out there, Lisa. Is there something we can do?
Oh.
The podium, you can't hear?
The-
Oh, is it the TV?
The speaker is, there's got, there's a switch for the speaker. If it's on or off.
What do we have in the city that can help with the TV outside? Is there anybody, employee who can help with the TV?
Okay, I think Dawn's going, yeah. Hold on. I'm sorry, give me one second.
HTV or?
Just, just to be clear, because this has been like a theme, right? I am Chair of Safety, and we were talking about a resident protection ordinance because car thefts and burglaries have increased over 100% in the last couple of years. Now, some members came up here and said, this is going to negatively impact Black and Brown people. I gave an example of growing up with other, 17 other brothers that looked like me running all over the place, and we didn't have any issues. Specifically talking about police contact, right? Nobody ever said that racism doesn't exist or whatever. Listen, there's racist people. What do you, I mean, like, let's not, you know, let's not play games, all right? Like, this is like a talking point that I keep hearing over and over again. And it's just, and it's just, it's just a lie, so.
Sorry.
I just want to clear that up. So I don't want people using that narrative over and over again.
You said it. You did say it. Oh, Fox, that's somebody that didn't have racism. I've lived in Summit for 50, 50 years. You said that. You said that.
Okay.
Ma'am, if you want to, if you want to speak, you have to come up to the-
You have to come and take the podium.
We voted for you. We put you in there.
Okay. Ma'am, okay. You can, okay. You can come, all right. I don't know if you want to speak. All right, are you ready, Roseanne?
Yeah.
How y'all doing? Real name is Arthur Stewart, but everybody knew me by Man Stewart. Born and raised in Summit. I'm actually 48 years old. I knew, I knew this guy, Mel, all my life. He's a good brother. I really can't believe that we here arguing over a holiday that is just actually exist. Nobody wasn't thinking about this holiday before and who matters, who speaks. It really don't matter. This is really, we sound like fools right here. Really, we really sound like fools. This guy helping me out with certain problems. He's a good brother. Anybody who really know me, I've been in a lot of trouble here. I went to jail. I actually did it all. A lot of these Summit cops, a lot of these white folks helped me, well as the Black. I've never seen this many people come here for something. It's, it's like stupid to me. It's really stupid. Hold on, hold on, listen. Hold on. This, y'all some church-going people, and y'all here arguing?
Excuse me, Council President, may I say something? All of you were, everything was explained at the beginning of the public comment period that you would not disrupt or comment while somebody else is speaking. Have the same respect you were given.
So, you know, just to go back, Summit people is doing a good job. It is ups and downs. I don't care who you are, what color, if you born and raised in Summit, you are special because you got better opportunity, school, jobs, people, people, they come from out of town to get jobs here because it's better. I don't really understand, man, what is this really all about? You know, I really don't understand. Jamel, you're a good brother. I got your back all the way, and people really know one hand. Thank you.
Oops, wait, wait, sorry. Yeah, let's clear. Okay, we got it.
You got it? Okay, hold on.
Good evening, Reverend Rod Williams, Fountain Baptist Church, 116 Glenside Avenue. For nearly 30 years, I coordinated the Ministry of Social Justice Education. As a proud, independent, unmotivated by politics, I'm inspired by a burning desire for justice, equality, and fairness for all people tempered with love and truth. I'm here tonight for the sake of truth. During a recorded hearing on the Affordable Housing Proposal, Councilman Boyer lowered the turn of the tone of the conversation with an inappropriate comment about the theoretical prospect of zero African-Americans moving into designated units. After his second quote, "That it not be conflated with housing for Black people," I challenged his premise for interjecting that non sequitur because nowhere had it been indicated that that was the intention of the plan, nor was there any reason to believe that Blacks or African-Americans would have any special access to said housing. I suggested that Summit's documented redlining presented an opportunity to address an injustice by including it as a consideration and not summarily ignoring it. Please note that it was Councilman Boyer who first introduced race into the conversation. At a council hearing on the Resident Protection Act, several people, including me, expressed concern over potentially dangerous language. Councilman Boyer attempted to defend his plan with a dubious story about he and his 17 young Black friends running through people's backyards in Summit. During his remarks, he looked at me at the 308 and 42nd mark and queried, and I quote, "But I'm Black, though, and we can agree on that." I responded with a non-committal gesture because under the council rules, I wasn't permitted to answer, nor was I in any way obligated to infer his ethnicity. He continued with the comment, "Sort of. See, there it is. I was expecting that." So again, who brought race into the discussions? I've corrected him before about that same dishonesty, saying that anyone disputed his ethnicity. You should be ashamed of yourself for once again attempting to portray yourself as a self-serving Black victim. It's also contemptible and disgraceful that any member of the council, the mayor, or anyone else would support your ridiculous accusations of bias and exclusion based on a difference of Black thought, especially heinous in the light of Juneteenth, the reminder of this great nation's last official liberation of enslaved Africans from the horror of chattel slavery while Black and African-American people are still facing cruelty and discrimination based on skin color. But I guess opportunism knows no shame. Mayor Fagan, President Allen, we are working with you on the ordinance language to achieve our shared goal of a safer city for all residents and not at the expense of some, but supporting Mr. Boyer's raw, unadulterated politicking is unproductive at best and an obstacle to trust at worst. Finally, as a student of African-American history, hearing your Juneteenth remarks, it was disrespectful to your ancestors and mine and beneath the dignity of the sacred event that you were desecrated with irrelevant comments about Cuba and the Ottoman Empire. So know this, we will continue to hold you accountable for every falsehood, every deception, every obfuscation, and every bit of pretentious grandstanding, not because you're Black and think differently, but because our people and the citizens of Summit deserve a lot better.
Thank you, Reverend. Yeah, I'll take care of it. Yeah.
My name is Annette Dwyer. I own and live in a single-family home located at 116 Maple Street in Summit. I am speaking as an individual, but I must disclose that I wear multiple hats. I am the Chair of Shaping Summit Together, whose mission is to ensure that Summit reaches its full potential as a mature, diverse suburban community and that Summit works together to shape its future. In other contexts, I'm a commercial property owner of a building in the Central Retail Business District. I appreciate the opportunity to address the mayor and Common Council this evening. I also appreciate the opportunity to be heard by those present in the audience, those who may be watching from home or watching the taped meeting. I would like to ask the collective audience of this message for a way-making, for peaceful and constructive collaboration on the topic of the city's obligation to meet its affordable housing requirement by December of 2025. The efforts made by intelligent, well-meaning, purely motivated people should be praised and not discredited. The efforts should be discussed and not discounted. The whole persons who have contributed time, talent, and resource to figuring out this complex, worthy topic should not be demonized by in-person, online, or other commentary. Under the privilege of free speech, ideas, interests, healthy debate, and perspectives are granted consideration, dialogue, and due diligence to inform a way forward on the topic relevant to the social and economic well-being of the municipality. Free speech comes with it a responsibility to be civil, respectful, truthful, and just. Emotions, perceptions, concerns, and disagreements can be addressed if there is an environment of calm and ample time to listen, internalize, and speak. At the moment, the environment is divisive, crass, scapegoating, and muting. It does not inspire personal safety or lifelong learning to gain perspective of the other. We are losing the social health of our community, and we must self-regulate that behavior. Placemaking in our community for individuals and/or families of all economic, racial, ethnic, gender, age, and ability attributes is our moral, legal, and beneficial obligation. Inspiring a sense of belonging means that affordable housing belongs in Summit. People matched to affordable housing belong in Summit. The design of the construct for everyone to belong is ours to achieve. Based on analyses, documentation, Summit does not have enough diverse housing stock to supply dwelling for a diverse resident population. The analyses have been referenced in the Master Plan, the Fair Share Housing Plan, and by the teams of people affiliated with all efforts to address the analyses of the Master Plan and the Fair Share Housing Plan. Affordable housing has been a prominent part of those well-documented, vetted, and sealed plans. Without a way-making, for peaceful and constructive collaboration, we will not be able to advance a way forward to develop and implement an optimal solution for meeting the affordable housing obligation and aspiration of this municipality. With respect, gratitude for your service, and compatible concerns by my fellow residents, I submit to you a plea for way-making towards peaceful, collaborative, and fact-based information.
Thank you, Annette.
Where we stand, where we going, and how we can get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette.
Tracy Keegan, 15 Stryer Road.
Tracy, hold on one second. I just want to give you a full time.
Lisa, I just have to tell you that what you just did in front of that audience was called whitesplaining, and it was disgusting. There's been a staggering amount of negative press about Summit in 2024. At least 18 news pieces in the last six months. In the 31 years since I first moved to Summit, I have never seen council seek attention like this. This is not good for Summit. As council passed their controversial Resident Protection Ordinance, four local news stations covered crime in our town, twice on CBS, as well as ABC, Fox 5, and NBC. There was another segment on June 4th on NJ 12 News. Mr. Boyer referenced one of these segments at the February 6th council meeting as he discussed the supposed need for the ordinance. Who decided it was a good idea to suggest there's a crime issue in our community? This is not good for Summit. The day after council passed the ordinance, an anonymous press release in Insider NJ ended with, "The council extends its gratitude to our mayor, Elizabeth Fagan, our residents and law enforcement, whose support was instrumental in the passage of this vital legislation." Who authored this? And why did council so, sound so dismissive of community pushback? This is not good for Summit. There was widespread reporting on a March 11th trip to Trenton in which Ms. Allen, Ms. Hamlet, and Ms. Fagan testified against affordable housing, and where Ms. Allen appeared to link affordable housing with crime, putting a target on our back. This is not good for Summit. On the same day, there was a WNYC radio segment on the controversy, featuring a clip of Ms. Allen's shocking Trenton comments. This is not good for Summit. On June 20th, a Gothamist article covered council's rejection of the at-home in Summit proposal in favor of auctioning off the firehouse property to developers. This is not good for Summit. The next day, a city press release defended council's rejection of the at-home in Summit proposal, accused volunteers of seeking profit, and defamed several community leaders. It was texted to thousands of residents and remains on the city website. This is not good for Summit. And finally, Mr. Boyer disparaged organizers of Juneteenth for weeks in statements at a council meeting, in a Happened to Summit article, in an Outkick article, in a Fox News- proposal, accused volunteers of seeking profit, and defamed several community leaders. It was texted to thousands of residents and remains on the city website. This is not good for Summit. And finally, Mr. Boyer disparaged organizers of Juneteenth for weeks in statements at a council meeting, in a Happened to Summit article, in an Outkick article, in a Fox News article, in a Fox News Live interview, and in a BizPac Review article. None of this is good for Summit, and it's all a result of elected officials seeking the spotlight. I implore the council majority to stop the attention-seeking, focus on the jobs that you were elected to do, do what you can to repair Summit's reputation, and seek the city's welfare and success, not your own.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Winkler, Summit resident, 108 Beekman Road since 2006, parent of a 2009 Summit High School graduate, and co-founder and editor-in-chief emeritus of Bloomberg News. I come before this council for the third time in five months, concerned that the city's long history of congeniality is threatened by recently-elected officials showing no desire to work in the public interest. Summit's Juneteenth is the latest example of a city celebration gone awry when elected officials' grievances were abetted by a pliant local media willing to stoke the flames of division for them. Earlier this year, Summit Common Council President Lisa Allen went to Trenton to condemn the state law mandating affordable housing, and in the process, warned of the expanding schools, the expanding crime that seeped into our communities. None of our assertions are true. They don't represent our community's values, and they provoked unfavorable attention on Summit. Summit Council's approval of the largest tax increase in at least ten years to support the doubling of the capital budget and a 250% increase in the next year without any discussion of the long-term impact on the city's debt burden is short-sighted and capricious. When recently-elected officials suddenly voted to sell city property that was well-positioned to help meet affordable housing obligations, they put Summit at risk for legal action for lack of good-faith efforts. These controversies are hazardous to Summit's reputation and devalue its appeal. Now, we know this because we've had decades of leadership working for the common good in Summit, in contrast to the current royalists who departed from what was Lincoln's essential promise of government of the people, by the people, for the people. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lisa DeVries, and I live at 153 Maple Street here in Summit. I came here tonight to support a member of my community, whose daughter goes to school with my daughter. And I understand there may be different sides of stories and different opinions, and I'm learning more information tonight as I sit here. But I'm respectful of both sides of the situation. But I came here to support my daughter's schoolmate, who, whose father has been nothing but kind to my family. So Councilman Boyer, I was here tonight to support you because I care. I certainly can't comment. I'm clearly of a different race than some folks here. That's clear. But I am a woman. Women have also been discriminated for years. I'm a member of a certain religion that has also had discrimination. We've all touched it in different ways. Obviously, some much more than others, but we all understand the hurt that comes with it. And I just ask that we all be respectful, because we're all volunteers, we all want the best, we all came to Summit. I came, I grew up in Baltimore, suburbs of Baltimore, in a very diverse community. I chose Summit for a reason. My husband had colleagues that lived in Madison and Chatham, and I went, and I was like, oh, yeah, they're nice. Everything was fine, but I was looking for a little something different. I got to Summit, I said, this, this is what I'm talking about. It's got a little bit of every, you know, like, I wanted to raise my family here because of the diversity. I didn't want a cookie cutter life. I wanted diverse thoughts, not just race, not just gender, not just sexuality, not just socioeconomic. I wanted diversity of thought as well. So just, I encourage everyone to respect the differences of thought. And I just have to comment, when people say there's not a crime problem, when I moved here, my one-year-old son was in the home with me, and our home was invaded at 5:00 AM in the morning when my husband left for work. And I was scared out of my mind. My fourteen-year-old's friend was at home, sick from school. He's fourteen, so his mother was not home, she was at work. And there was an invasion in his house where he had jumped out of the second-story window. I have clubs that sit on, I don't have the luxury of having a garage, okay? I live in a small home, I don't have a garage. I have clubs, like the things that we used in the eighties, because all of my friends' cars have gotten stolen. So there is a crime problem. So I would just say that you, I'm a citizen, and I believe, in my experience, I have, I elected a lot of you folks because of your stance on crime. So I don't want to leave tonight without expressing my opinion that, and I understand there's another side to it, but I definitely see an increase in crime. Our kids see it. My child was walking, she's fourteen, and has a, my children are scared.
Thank you, Mr. DeVries.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. I was gonna talk about the Fourth of July, following on Mayor Fagan's statements earlier, but my heart's racing. This is not good for Summit. We need to resolve this. I recognize a lot of faces in the crowd. This is not how we move ahead. All we're doing is doing this. You're gonna suffer, you're gonna suffer. We gotta finish this. Normal business is suffering. We're not getting anything done. We need to resolve this. Sit down, talk about it, figure out where we went wrong, where we went right. This is what we gotta do, because this is not good. As Mr. Stewart, I think, said. We look like idiots. We're all, we're all smart people in this room. We should be able to resolve this. I know we have a difference of opinions. And by the way, I'm not perfect. I don't think anybody in this room is perfect. We all make mistakes. So let's, let's move forward, and let's get this, let's work on next year. Let's get moving along here, because we're just spinning our wheels. I appreciate your side of the coin, I appreciate your side of the coin, but we gotta get together and move ahead. I know it sounds difficult, and it probably will be, but we gotta do it.
We have to.
Yes. Now, back to Fourth of July. Police Department, Fire Department, OEM, First Aid Squad, great job. I was very involved with that for many years. It's a lot of work. People don't see what's going on behind the scenes. David Guetta starts July 5th planning for next year. Donors, wouldn't happen without the donors donating their money, but there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people don't see. So maybe we need to apply that to this issue. Behind the scenes, let's get it done. All right? Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jason Holmes, Three Dennis Place. I grew up on 35 Park Avenue, Summit, New Jersey. My mother's sitting right here. She graduated in Summit. My father was a police officer here, okay, for twenty-six years. I knew the chief when he was coming on. I normally don't come to this stuff. I don't really care about politics and all that stuff. I got other things to do. But I came because I saw that they were gonna attack a fellow friend of mine, and it's not right. I know that maybe, maybe he made a mistake on something, but I think there's a better way that we could have resolved this, and I just feel for him. We have to do better as a, as a community. Either way, period.
Peter LaJoy, 124 Canoe Brook Parkway, Summit, New Jersey. First of all, I'd like to just make a general statement. Nobody here knows what has walked in any of our shoes, and no one knows what we've experienced, and where we came from, and how we got here. So the first thing we have to start is respecting each other. As to Mr. Bloomberg and Ms. Keegan to continue to be frustrated because they lost the election last year and tried to turn this into an election issue again, and again, and again, good luck, but we know what you're saying. We hear it loud and clear. It comes through. You didn't win. And the budget, by the way, just so everybody knows, was put together by the prior council, who supposedly was so royal. But they put together the budget, they put together the capital budget, they put together the plan with the city administrator, and they basically delivered it and dropped it on this council's lap with a few weeks to adopt it. So to blame this council on all of the sins of the past ten years of a group that couldn't even get a building built properly, I'm sorry, I disagree. But my overriding comment tonight is, we really need to start thinking about each other and walking in each other's, other's shoes, and understanding that they all, we all came from different places and come from different places, suffered different things, and have had to live through different things. And I agree that it's time to put this thing behind us and sit down, just like the Fourth of July, and just like everything else we do in Summit, and work this out. But Ms. Keegan and Mr. Bloomberg, we don't need your moralizing. We really don't.
I just, I want to just announce, please keep your eyes on me and try not to address anybody in the audience, or on the council.
My name is Kristen Sandborn. I live at Nine Rowan Road, and I'm a twenty-year resident of Summit. And in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm also a Democratic Committee member. About two weeks ago, I posted on the Summit Happenings Facebook page that I was offended by Lisa Allen's testimony before a state hearing considering affordable housing legislation. I expanded on my initial comment by saying that I had always found Ms. Allen relatively balanced in the past, but felt that this was not her best performance, and it was unfortunately on a large stage. Imagine my surprise when one or two days later, I received the following unsolicited Facebook private message from Councilwoman Delia Hamlet's personal account at 11:00 PM on a Friday night. Message one at 11:10 PM. Hey, Kristen, we are looking for some people to donate some of their land for affordable housing. Would you be interested? Because we might be able to get some accessory dwelling units in your backyard. I think it could be really cool. Please let me know your earliest convenience, and I can get you in touch with the Affordable Housing Liaison. It would be amazing. Message two at 11:31 PM. We have immediate availability, I think, if you would like to help out and donate your land. I responded that I was, in fact, interested in learning more about such a program, and asked Ms. Hamlet to send me the details. She did not. I asked again for details nine days later and received nothing. At this point, I called Matthew DeLore's office to inquire about the details of such a program. His response was, quote, "The city is not currently pursuing taking any actions on ADUs to generate affordable housing," unquote. And this is why Ms. Hamlet did not answer me, because her proposal was not real. So the question is, what was Ms. Hamlet's intention in writing that message to me? Was she baiting me to get me to say, "You can't have my property"? Was she trolling me to say, "If you want affordable housing so much, then you use your own land"? Was she attempting to intimidate me or shut me up? The only messages I have received from Ms. Hamlet prior to this incident were requests to transport her daughter home from Lake Hopatcong, as she and my son are members of the same small rowing club there. Which leads me to the broader point of my statement here tonight. We are neighbors who depend on each other. Of course, we have policy differences, but we should be able to safely and maturely articulate those differences. Affordable housing is a serious topic. Councilwoman Hamlet, you were elected to seriously address such important topics and to make Summit a better place, not to bait or troll your constituents. Your message late that Friday night from a Facebook account on which you continue to post was highly inappropriate, and makes me wonder what you've done to others with whom you've had more substantive disagreements.
I can answer that one specifically if you want me to. I think we should wait. Yeah, you can, but we gotta wait.
Good evening. Willie Francois, Senior Pastor of Fountain Baptist Church, 116 Glen Side Avenue. I'm very new to our, our town, to our community, and I count it a privilege to be a part of this community that has the potential for transformative diversity, has opportunities to think about what it means for us to practice democracy, to practice civility with one another. And tonight has not been the greatest example of that, but for some reason, I still have great hope and great optimism that being in, working and worshiping in a city like Summit holds opportunities for us to think deeply about what it means to do justice. I'm a pastor. I don't pastor a Democratic church. I don't pastor a Republican church. I pastor a church that is committed to love, committed to dignity, and committed to justice. And that is why Reverend Williams was a part of this committee to celebrate Juneteenth as a representative of Fountain, because we're committed to justice, we're committed to love, and we're committed to human decency, things that are being crucified right now by so much public behavior, by people who are elected and some who are not elected. I want to be clear that it may feel as if Brother Boyer is being attacked here today, and, and some may have personal vendettas against him, but I believe that he is a good man. I believe he's good to his family, he's good to his children. I believe he's good to those who know him. But this is not about whether or not Brother Boyer is a good man. This is about who he is as a public servant. And as a public servant, he is always eligible for critique. As a public servant, he is eligible to be held accountable, like all of you are. You signed up to be held accountable. So I wanted to be very clear that, that the position that, that the Fountain leader that spoke first today has, it's not about who Brother Boyer is as a person, this is about policy. I'm a son of Galveston, Texas. That is the birthplace of Juneteenth. I've celebrated Juneteenth every year for the thirty-seven years that I've been alive. It's a tradition in my family that we've celebrated Juneteenth. And Juneteenth is a moment where we do not just celebrate the end of slavery, because technically slavery did not end on that day. It ended a few months later. But Juneteenth has to be an opportunity for us to think about where we go next, to think about how we fulfill the unfinished work of Reconstruction and the unfinished work of the Civil Rights Movement. The, the refusal to expand affordable housing is a threat to the spirit of Juneteenth. To not take seriously that when some people say crime, they actually mean black and brown, is to not take seriously the spirit of Juneteenth. All of the things that you've heard that have been critiques of Brother Boyer are a part of the spirit that we want to live out Juneteenth as more than just a holiday, but a call to action.
Thank you, Pastor.
To fulfill Reconstruction and Civil Rights.
Thank you, Pastor.
Good evening. I'm Claire Toth, 11 Sunset Drive. Summer's in full swing, and I'm hearing from residents how much they miss the outdoor dining and entertainment on Maple Street. Every time I'm downtown, it feels like a missed opportunity. We should have diners enjoying the restaurants, residents lounging on street furniture and watching children draw on the street with chalk, live music and dancing, all the activity that attracts people downtown. And instead, we have a quiet street. As it did last year, Milburn has figured out how to do this. Milburn has adopted the pedestrian mall model of street closing, a straightforward procedure with no state involvement. Milburn recently debuted a closed street as its eating, drinking, music, and entertainment destination for the summer. Multiple Summit residents have forwarded me an article about this pedestrian mall, pointing out that we could have and should have done it the same. And this is about more than having fun. As Milburn documented last year, a pedestrian mall is good economics. It draws visitors who could be coming to It draws visitors who could be coming to Summit but are not. Those visitors spend real money on and off the mall. By not offering the same warm-weather amenities as neighboring communities, Summit risks hurting our downtown businesses. It gives residents fewer reasons to spend money in Summit, and it forfeits a big attraction that encourages potential new residents to visit and try us out. We don't need to wait for a new master plan to figure out how to do this. Council should lead the city in providing a seasonal pedestrian mall. It benefits all of us. Thank you.
I'm Figgy Freeman, 46 Shadyside Avenue. I came here to express support for Councilman Boyer. The councilman had a bad experience dealing with the Juneteenth Committee, and he spoke his truth. He is free to do that. We have all noticed the increasingly partisan nature of public events in Summit since 2016. The angry voices of Summit Marches On and other partisan groups have torn our town apart, pitting neighbor against neighbor. There has been a great deal of partisan bickering surrounding many events that I've seen in recent years as a citizen of Summit: the Day of Pride, the Gun Violence Rally, and now Juneteenth. Summit Marches On even found a way to negatively politicize Halloween last fall. I believe Councilman Boyer when he says he was discriminated against because of his political affiliation. Instead of an apology for his voice experience, Councilman Boyer has received nothing but more abuse from these angry partisans. It's wrong. The citizens of Summit have had enough. It's time to come together and show respect for each other and those on the opposite side of the aisle. It's time for these divisive forces to change their ways. Thank you, Councilman Boyer, for speaking your truth and telling us your experience. I hope it inspires change here in Summit. Please don't be discouraged or intimidating, intimidated, from continuing to do so in the future. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? I'm good? Okay. All right. Good evening. Trevor Cromwell, Tyler Street. For those who don't know me, I was born and raised in Summit and have been working in Summit ever since graduating high school. What I mean by that is I was born at Overlook, grew up on Park Avenue through Lincoln Hubbard Elementary, Middle School, High School, and then months after I graduated, I've been working in this community in a number of different groups, organizations, committees. So that's what I mean by I was really born and raised in Summit, and that's not an indictment to anybody in here. One of those groups, the only group that's relevant today, because I'm speaking on behalf of me, myself, no one else, is the Juneteenth Committee, right? So just to be clear, so everyone knows how it's been, because I've been on the committee for three years, whether someone is speaking for four seconds, four minutes, whether they're presenting, speaking, performing, either one person, multiple people, or all members of the committee will meet with that person prior to the event, to go over time, to go over schedule, to go over making sure everybody's on the same page. In three years, the only person that didn't go through that process was Councilman Boyer. And that's because of some of the, you know, things that were said today. No one told us that he was planning or promised to speak. I don't know what happened. So days before the event, we didn't know in February that, you know, he was told he was going to speak. If that's the case, then through all the emails and conversations we were having with city officials, somebody at some point probably would have said, "When is Jamel speaking? Why isn't he on the schedule?" Right? Lisa, you spoke to that, you know, you and I, and Monique spoke June 13th, 10th, whatever, just a couple of weeks before the event. Again, as you mentioned, nobody brought up Jamel speaking. The only time I was a part of any conversation about Jamel was the morning of the event, just hours before we were supposed to go. And the only thing I said on that call was, "Before we get to who's speaking and what they're talking about, why are we having this conversation now?" Right? This is something that should have been planned out. We have everything planned out to the final minute. We've crossed all our Ts, dotted all our Is, and that's what this issue is about. I can't allow anybody to make this about politics. Most of the committee members respectfully don't even know who you are to have an issue with your politics, respectfully. And I know I got some laughs, but I'm being honest, and that's part of the problem. We didn't know what Jamel was going to say. We didn't know him. None of the committee members had a chance to meet with you, and that's what this really is about. The reason you're getting this energy today isn't because we have an issue with Jamel Boyer, it's that we have an issue with what he said. Because maybe he has an issue with one or two people, but he, everybody that's been a part of that committee, that attended one meeting or helped plan it, he said that we, I don't want to quote you, "Have an issue because you're a black Republican, and we don't believe you're black." I don't know you, to call you a liar respectfully, but that statement was a lie. We saw the council stand up and applaud that lie, and now we have this division because we all know how divisive politics and races today. I didn't even want to come here. I'm annoyed and frustrated that I even have to be here, but we're talking about respect. The respectful thing would have had a conversation before you made those comments public and brought this energy to the council.
That's how people get in. Just say your name and your home address.
Rachel A. Gonzalez, 116 Glen Side Avenue. I am a lifelong member of Fountain Baptist Church.
Speak louder, please. Yeah, yeah, just speak. Thank you.
I am a lifelong member of Fountain Baptist Church, and I'm here, I had no intention of speaking tonight, but I felt compelled to speak from my experience with the Juneteenth celebration in Summit. It is a beautiful event. The first year it was had, my children were there, reciting poetry, singing, just something that was made to bring the community together. And it's so sad to see something so great that people worked so hard to bring together being muddled by chaos, confusion, and division. A day that's supposed to celebrate liberation for everyone. Reverend Williams, outside of his many glorious hats, is a man of integrity that I have seen year after year pour love, respect, community into each and every person he touches. So to stand here and have to hear people say that he was anything other than that is really, really a disservice to this community. This is a great man who has done many great things, not only my children, the people of the community, and outside. No matter who you are, what color you are, or where you stand, this is a great man.
Stacy Allen, Plymouth Road, 17 Plymouth Road. I'd like to echo what the previous speaker said, but I'd like to say it about Jamel Boyer, Councilwoman Jamel Boyer. I have known him for a few years now, and I think he is a very good man, even though I heard people saying he is not. I don't understand how anybody could ever say that. This man cares about our community. He is the pride of our town. If somebody thinks he made a mistake, then that is something they can speak to. I agree with one of the other previous speakers, that it is perfectly reasonable for people to criticize council members, especially in this forum. However, to say that he is not a good man is totally offensive and horrible, and I can't even believe it was even said in this room. And I just want to say that this is a man who is definitely doing his service to our community. He is caring and loving, and somebody who will put this town first, and will definitely care about all the citizens of this town. I was at the Juneteenth event. I found, I thought it was a very nice celebration. I loved the tap dancing, and I loved some of the other events there. However, when, after all the council people spoke, the speaker after was Pastor Vernon Williams, and what he said sounded to me like he was negating what the previous speaker said, including Councilman Boyer. I found that to be not appropriate and not fair. He is entitled to his position. He's entitled to his own view of the world, just like Councilman Boyer is, and I think he should have respected Councilman Boyer's opinion and let him stand with his opinion, and he can say what his truth is. So I thought that was not appropriate, and I did not care for it. And that's why I'm standing up today to say, I think Councilman Jamel Boyer is an asset to this community and a very fine person. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Ward. I normally don't do things like this either, and I think my church family, Fountain Baptist Church, they could attest to that as well. When I heard about the fact that this was going to be taking place tonight, I'm going to have to use a big word that came to my heart: flabbergasted. Absolutely flabbergasted. And I mean that in the most positive, constructive way, even though it's not really a positive, constructive word. And the reason that came to my heart is because I know both entities when it comes to the situation with Juneteenth. I wasn't there. I was at the presentation the year before last, maybe it was last year. But it was beautiful. I don't know all of the facts of what was happening this year and what's been going on, other than mainly of what I've heard tonight and the fact that this was going to be happening. What I know about Fountain Baptist Church, it is an absolutely beautiful church. It absolutely has the best interests of the City of Summit and nationwide, worldwide. I know that factually. And so I know that there would never be any ill intent for anything in Summit or nationwide that would come from Fountain Baptist Church. I know that. I also know that Summit is a great town, absolutely great town. From the people who are here, I don't know you individually. I've seen some people here. I know a lot of the students in the town. It's a very quaint town. I mean, very good things about it. So I just really hope that, I would like to mimic what some people have already said, that it's time to move forward, that we could get together, you know, the two entities, and put this aside and work to make it better going forward. And I really feel from the depths of my soul that this moment, this time, is the catalyst for that change. Because sometimes this is the way change takes place. You bring forward the issues that are at stake, or whatever the issues may be, and you put them on the table and you work to resolve them. And I think this is the start of that, and I look forward to the change and how it's going to be so much better going forward. Thank you.
Susan Bowen, 45 Waldron Avenue, 61-year hilltopper. Trevor, I'm trying to think, my daughter, I think, was in his class. I remember his mom well. I'm listening to all of this, and I'm on one side of this. I'm clearly on Jamel's side, but I'm listening to everybody. And what I'm hearing, the problem here, first of all, is the ad hominem attacks, which have to stop. It's just wrong. But the second thing is, it appears that this was an information problem. And from my perspective, just from what I've heard from Council President Allen, it appears that the information gap may have been between the Department of Community Programs, the communications person, and the city council. So I think maybe some thought needs to be put there, because in general, if a city councilman wants to speak on the City of Summit's bandshell, that's kind of a given, right? So let's move forward that way. Let's say, let's not do this anymore. Let's not have ad hominem attacks. We all live here. We all love it here. We all would stay here as long as we could. And I think there's an information gap, and I think that that's causing a lot of the emotional issue here. So what to do then is to say, okay, what are we going to do about this information gap? What happened, say, in February, or May, or even last fall? Where is the information gap? And how do we fix it? That's it. Just fix it. We all want the best. Everyone here wants the best. Everyone here loves Summit. Let's start there. Let's fix the problem without all the vitriol. Let's just fix it. And if there's some apologies to be made on both sides, let's make them. I'm a manager. I just, Monday was my 40th anniversary of working on, 39th anniversary of working on Wall Street, and one of the things I tell all my people is, "We praise in public and we criticize in private." It works really well. You don't have to scream at each other. You really don't. You can say, if this had been happened in May or February, somebody should have said, somebody maybe from the DCP, maybe the communications officer, maybe Jamel himself, maybe the city council, I don't know, somebody should have said, "Hey, what's this looking like? What's it, how's it going to work? What's the order of speakers?" One of the things I heard, I have 19 seconds, one of the things I heard was that some of the city council members said very nicely, "I cede my time." To me, that sounds like a great solution. But let's talk about solutions without the vitriol, and certainly without the personal attacks on people who work hard, want to be here, want to live here, and want to make things right.
Thank you, Susan. Because I'm going to close public comment if there's nobody else. Okay. We'll close public comment then. I think we're going to, um, council members? Okay. So we're going to close public comment. I'm going to give the council members an opportunity to say anything that they would like to say. I'm just going to kind of go around the dais. Councilman Smallwood, did you say you want to speak?
I can.
Oh, yeah. No, I didn't know if you wanted to.
Sure.
Okay.
So I was the council liaison to the Department of Community Programs. And typically, the, from my understanding, the events that are put on by the City of Summit and...
Kevin, can you just pull your microphone closer?
No, sorry. From my understanding in the short period of time that I've been here, even though I'm the liaison to the Department of Community Programs, it's really up to the Department of Community Programs with Mark and David setting the agendas for the events that go And, you know, I mentioned to David and Mark when it came to the Juneteenth event that Jamel would like to speak. And I was told that, you know, that was conveyed to the Juneteenth Committee in February. And he was told that the Juneteenth Committee was not ready to discuss speakers at the time. I wasn't involved in any of the other planning, which I don't feel like I should have been. It's, you know, it's the Department of Community Programs, the Juneteenth Advisory Board that I would trust to put that together. I was involved in two conversations. One was about a budget, and the other one was, I believe, the day before or the morning of the event itself. And that was regarding Councilman Boyer speaking. My impression was that, you know, there was an ultimate miscommunication, an ultimate breakdown of the Department of Community Programs, the Juneteenth Advisory Committee, about the complete agenda. And I think that was probably the biggest issue. When we had a discussion on the phone about Councilmember Boyer speaking, and then ultimately a concession basically saying all council members, we wanted to offer all council members to speak for 45 seconds. Reverend Williams, I appreciate you offering for all of us, because I did speak. It was heartfelt for me, and I did appreciate that opportunity. But I also felt that Jamel... But I also felt that Jamelle, and, you know, with Ms. Harrison being the first African-American woman to be elected to the city council in the history, was extremely important. However, I also felt that it was extremely important that Jamelle, being the first African-American male, I didn't see the difference in sexes. I felt like that was equally important. And, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hash through comments, and I think enough has already been said. Enough hurt has already been done. I just, if I'm on the Department of Community Programs next year, I certainly will make sure that the Department of Community Programs and the Juneteenth and any other event advisory board has much better communication, and so that there are no last-minute surprises, last-minute changes, and everyone involved in all of the events are well-aware of what will happen on that day. There's nothing that we can do about the past. The only thing, the only thing that we can do now is to learn from this experience. We are all neighbors, whether we all live here, worship here, or work here. And I will do my part, as the Department of Community Programs liaison, to work with the advisory committees, so that we don't have any other misunderstandings going forward. I wanted to, I did want to advocate for Councilman Boyer, because I did feel like it was extremely important, him being the first African-American male, to be elected to council. As a Caucasian male, I don't know what that means. He does. And I felt like him having that opportunity, or having a little bit more time to speak about that, I felt that that was important, and that's what I was trying to advocate And, you know, it's, again, I think, I'm not going to rehash everything that went on, I respect everyone's comments tonight, and their perspective. And I think from this point forward, you know, I think there needs to be some discussions behind the scenes, and I really liked Ms. Bowen's comment, thank you, about, you know, praise everyone publicly, criticize privately. There she is, sorry. I thought that was, that was, that hit home with me, so thank you for that. And I, this is a very public forum. I've, in the six months that I've been here, I choose my words wisely, and I, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, the temperature of this room, I appreciate everyone being here, and I love the engagement, but it would be a lot better if we were all here in celebration in this engagement. And I feel like the miscommunications regarding the Juneteenth event, although I thought was a, it went off very well, and I enjoyed being there. But I think the events afterwards that happened kind of took away from it. And I hope that doesn't happen again in the future. So, I will do my part to help bridge the gap, and I think there certainly needs to be some private conversations after this evening, to help kind of bridge that gap. And I will certainly do my part to, to help make that happen. So, thank you.
Councilman Barton?
Thank you, Council President. I'm proud that Summit has celebrated Juneteenth for the last several years. I have never been part of the planning committee, or the planning of the event at all. This year, I was honored to be asked to speak, and I did so. I spoke about the tragedy of slavery, the continuing effects of systemic racism, and my own commitment as an extremely privileged elected official, to use that privilege to pursue justice and equity for our community and the people I'm honored to serve. So I'm compelled to defend our institutions, those institutions that provide, in this community, moral leadership, institutions like the Interfaith Council, which has been tough on both Republican and Democratic councils. They advocate for the gospel, and they advocate for what they believe is the moral obligation of this city. And I think it is disappointing that they have been attacked. And I think it's, I agree with my colleague, Kevin, that it is heartbreaking the way that this has divided this community. And speaking for me, I know my role is also to advocate for things like affordable housing, which brings me to the next topic, which is, I don't know if she's still here, but I do want to thank Kristin Sanborn for her bravery in coming here and telling us about this experience that she had. I've been on council for six years, I've been council president for one. I don't think I've ever sent any message about city business at 11 o'clock on a Friday, definitely not from my personal Facebook page, and definitely not about a program that doesn't exist. So I just want to tell Kristin that I will be following up and looking into this situation. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that. Well, anybody who knows me knows I'm usually working or emailing at all hours of the day. Emailing is working a lot, and I will say that, Greg, you were actually on an email with me Saturday, February 17th, and I said, actually Director Schreger and I were on this email. And he said, forwarding this as an FYI, as I learned about at my NJ SME meeting this week, this would be a major change to development as we know it, and we've had more than a few requests in the past to have accessory dwelling units in the past in Summit. Will create some interesting debates, and many in the planning world support this for many reasons we can discuss later. For now, just an FYI. And we also went back and forth between the planner on February 14th around accessory dwelling units. And then I called Joe Burgess around accessory dwelling units. So my comment was regarding the bill that's in the Senate right now, I don't have it on me. I think Singleton is the author of the bill for accessory dwelling units, I forget where it's at. Director Schreger, you could probably opine on that, is it on right now, still?
Yeah, I couldn't, you're Council President, I don't have an update on that.
I don't have an update on it, but we were talking about accessory dwelling units, and Governor Murphy, I think, has given, I think it's, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's around $10 million to 10 different municipalities, I don't want to quote it, but there has been some movement on accessory dwelling units. And part of our mission on the Mount Laurel Committee is to really advocate for anyone in Summit to de-restrict their homes, so that we can get more affordable housing, and if you do have land, we'd be happy to have the land. So anybody who's passionate, and who has land, we have a bunch of abandoned homes in Summit. So my comment is, if you are passionate about affordable housing, and my email to Ms. Sanborn was just that, there's lots of different ways, and we're working really hard in the Mount Laurel Committee to get more affordable housing. I think that half the time I spend defending Lisa going down to Trenton, because the bill that was just passed is not appropriate planning for Summit. We all want more affordable housing. We're working really hard to get more affordable housing every day in Summit. That's the reality, and we're working hard to do that. As far as Juneteenth, I think part of the confusion is that I was the pro temp, and I think Mayor Fagan said to me a few weeks before, are you going to speak, I'm not going to be here. And I said, geez, you know what, I think I'm going to be away too, but I'm not sure. And I was away with my family unexpectedly, and I called Lisa, and I said, you know what, I'm really sorry, I can't attend the event, I'm going to be away. And I said, would you mind speaking for me? And she said, you know what, even better, I think Jamelle should, would be better off speaking. And I said, oh, great, well, it sounds like you have it covered. So that was really the story around maybe why we weren't all communicating, but Mayor Fagan was away, I was then away, and when I talked with Lisa, Lisa said, you know, that Jamelle would seem to be a perfect choice, and I don't think anybody could disagree with that. That's the most I've heard of it, and then I think my only other disappointment was that when we did, we were allowed 45 seconds, I went back with Reverend Williams a few times, and I did say I'd give my time to Jamelle, and I was not allowed to do that. I think it's important for everybody to remember, this is a city event, and even at the Memorial Day event this year, I suggested, perhaps, we have a speaker that resonates more with the younger crowd, to get them motivated about service. So I think there's always different, you know, we can always give our opinion on maybe there would be, you know, a direction that the speaker could go in, and for Memorial Day this year, I recommended that we, that we do that. And we had a great speaker, I think he really resonated with the crowd, and it went over well. But the last thing I will say is, I want to bring this community together, there's a lot of hurt in this audience, and I can guarantee that there has been racism, is racism in Summit, and my heart goes out to anyone who has experienced racism. Everybody in this room would say that, I think, hands down, would not believe in racism, would not advocate for racism, and we are here as a community, and to be together, and to build up each other, and to worship together. This is a place of community, and trust me here, I am not up here for politics. I am here to serve the residents of Summit, and do the right thing, and making you feel safe in your homes, making you feel safe in your streets, know that is my priority. Please know that that is our priority, and that is genuine. Thank you.
So I've written down a bunch of things to say, and I've scratched a bunch of things out, and I've written other things, and I've scratched other things out. I've witnessed some of the things that we-
Hey, Bob, I'm sorry, Councilman Plousky, yeah, please.
I've witnessed some of the things that we are talking about tonight. But I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go into all of them. Jamelle Boyer's my friend, and you won't find a better one. He'll give you the shirt off of his back. I could never get into that shirt, but I know he would give it to me if I needed it. He's also a dedicated public official, cares more about this town than he does about himself, and that should be obvious, based on what we've seen him sit through tonight. I've seen Jamelle be treated unfairly ever since he started running, and it pains me. But I'm not going to get into all the details, because this divisiveness pains me too, and I know that it pains Jamelle. So I'm looking forward to hearing what he has to say, which I think is going to be something unifying and something great.
Do you want to say anything? Okay, Councilman Boyer?
So, there is many things running through my mind right now, as I, as I look out at so many people who I know, so many people who have raised me over the years, friends, cousins, aunts, uncles, extended family, supporters, detractors. I truly appreciate the fact that all of you are here. The problem with this whole scenario is this. I was told one thing, I am on the Safety Committee, the Health Committee, Summit Housing Authority, I have a job, I have two children, I got a dog. I have a lot to do, all right? So when somebody tells me, hey, are you going to do this? And I say yes, then it's, you know, when do I, when do I show up, or what do I need to do? I mean, that's kind of how it is. Now, the week of the event, I'm thinking everything is fine. And you got to understand, I'm not a part of any of these conversations. I didn't, I haven't spoken to anybody. I mean, I'm getting phone calls about conversations that city employees and council members are having with Reverend Williams and Mrs. Kincaid. And they were disturbing what was, what was being said to me. So, for a minute, I want you to put yourself in my shoes, if you can. Picking up the phone, and someone saying to you, hey, you know, you can't speak at Juneteenth, and I'm kind of like, well, why? What's the issue? Well, the issue is that, you know, they feel as though that you don't represent black people in Summit. I mean, hey, listen, I got to tell you, you can, again, put yourself in my shoes, I'm getting phone calls, and this is what I'm being told. First, made concessions, and we're talking about giving folks time to speak. You know, yeah, Jamelle can talk, but we got to give, we'll invite everybody to speak. Well, okay. Well, and again, this is not really, it's not really about me, it's the circumstances that are involved, right? So those negotiations are happening, and then, I think it was the, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but, you know, one of the council members said to Reverend Williams, it's like, I don't understand this, I don't, I don't get it. Why can't we just give, if it's a time issue, we'll just give you, we'll give you our time, let them speak? And the comment was, well, we want to hear from the white people. Yeah, I mean, I mean, exactly, that was, that was my shock too. I think, I think that stuff is ridiculous, and you can really understand why I'm really, I'm really upset. It's not about the event, it's not about the time, you know, it's about the conversations about me with a group of other people, and then coming back to me. Addressing this issue is particularly challenging, because, and when Black faith leaders are often seen as moral and ethical leaders within our community, I get that, and challenging some comments or actions can be perceived as divisive, or as betraying solidarity within the Black community. But this is not my goal or intention. However, it's essential to remember that accountability and fairness should apply to everybody, regardless of their position or status. We should expect faith leaders to promote fairness and open communication, even if our political views differ. They should approach situations with impartiality and respect. In this case, they should have facilitated constructive dialogue. Why not call me? Why not, if you have a disagreement with me speaking, pick up the phone and call me? Why talk to all of the rest of the council members and say all these things? Why talk to all of the rest of the council members and say all these things? You know? I care about the black churches in Summit. The black church is an institution, it has history, it has narrative, it has a sense of self-understanding, and it gives meaning to people's lives. And I don't wanna see the image of the church represented in this way. No, allowing certain behavior from anyone to go unaddress creates a double standard and promotes hypocrisy. If we, as leaders, and religious leaders, preach values of love, equality, and justice, but our actions contradict these teachings, then it undermines the core message that they are supposed to uphold. In resolving these differences, there must be a willingness from the person in the wrong to apologize and take accountability. On the other side, the party that has been wrong must be willing to forgive. And Reverend Williams, Ms. Kincaid, Reverend Williams, whatever happened, I forgive all of you. But you see, where pride and arrogance prevent people from admitting their wrongs to their brothers and sisters, they refuse to apologize and it creates a barrier. Similarly, when someone apologizes and the other side refuses to forgive, it fosters division. So for what you said, again, I forgive you. In such cases, unity becomes impossible if we harbor hatred and bitterness in our hearts. Because these issues here that we're dealt with are petty issues. We become enemies to each other. When working together, trust is essential. If we can't trust one another to have each other's backs, unity is unattainable. As a community, we must overcome these barriers to achieve true harmony and collaboration. I want to sincerely also apologize to the residents of Summit for taking time away from addressing your concerns to deal with this matter. However, it is crucial to bring these issues to light, because they will continue to occur if less, if left unaddressed. We cannot simply kick the can down the road with someone else to deal with it, especially when that person may share the same values and views as you. It is essential to encourage those who remain silent to speak up and stand against discrimination and bias by doing so will foster a community that holds fairness, equity, and respect for all. And lastly, I want to thank the pastor for coming out. I appreciate your words, Pastor. I wish that we have met outside of this occasion. I know that Dr. Charles Boyer frequents Fallon Baptist Church, you know, my cousin very frequently. The bottom line is that, yeah, there is a community issue. And maybe for months, really, the Reverend Williams and Ms. Kincaid-
My name is Taylor.
Ms. Taylor, thank you. We have had a, a miscommunication, but I've always extended my hand. Ms. Taylor, I've extended my hand to you during a debate you wouldn't shake it. Reverend Williams, we have breakfast. I thought we had a great breakfast. Following council meeting, you know, we could have resolved some issues disunited, I mean, and then it was completely different. I, yeah, I was always willing to work, but it gets to a point where, you know, comments are too much, and I'm not one to just sit back. However, this community needs to be unified, and I don't wanna be the person that causes any division within these families, because you guys are, we're all family. I'm looking out at you. We're all family. And at the end of the day, I think we can work on repairing and restoring what has been lost here. Because I am here to help folks. I mean, you, you may not see it, but I grew up on Dennis Place. I'm on Leaver Street in Glenwood, helping out residents all the time. See, that's the stuff, see, but that, you know, but that's the stuff that, see, that's the stuff I've been dealing with, you know? And so, if we really wanna, if, if we really wanna see what's going on, this is, this has been going on. This is the type of stuff that I've been dealing with. You know, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying, and I have been. I'm trying to come out and extend a hand, and this is what I've been getting back for several months. Right? So we could sit there, we could say, you know what, yeah, he's lying, he's doing this, he's doing that. But your actions tell the truth, they tell the story. So if we really wanna repair relationships-
Please start respecting each other.
Let's do that. Let's do that. Thank you.
As I mentioned before, I, I didn't wanna get into details because I wanna, I wanna move on from this, but I, I felt like one of the comments that Councilman Boyer just said, a third of the room got up and walked away.
They was on the van, they had to leave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That makes sense. Okay, that's good. Can we leave it there?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for telling us that.
May I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
Sorry. So I wanted to ask, so Ms. Sandborn had a question I wanted to ask you, and you don't have to answer it yet, but did you reach out to anyone else seeking them to donate their land?
No, but I certainly would, and we've been talking about it in the Mount Laurel Committee. Anybody can donate their land.
You didn't reach out to anyone else, though?
I have to look back at my emails. But I was actually, there was someone the other day who came up to Council, and I said we should actually reach out to her. But we've been reaching out to churches and many churches, yeah, anybody would have donated their land.
But, but just to be clear, real quick, through you, Council President.
And de-restrict or de-restrict?
Yeah, just to be clear, though, with the community, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, right? There, there may be this, this bill, right, in Trenton about the possibility of ADUs and potentially funding attached. That may or may not be a good idea for this community, but just to be very clear, we do not have that possibility now. Nobody can add an accessory dwelling unit as part of a zoning plan or anything like that now. You could de-restrict your house, but I haven't, I have to see what Kristen was saying, but you said we have immediate availability, which doesn't exist, that doesn't exist. So we have to understand what's happening here.
Maybe I meant we have immediate availability. If anybody would like to donate their land, we can build, we have trust fund money, we can do a lot of things with it.
Okay.
I think-
We talk about it all the time.
We gotta-
Yeah, we gotta move on. But there, ADUs do exist in Summit.
Yes, but not as part of our zoning framework. And you can't add them on now as affordable housing, as was seemingly suggested.
No, I was just talking, I was speaking about the bill that is in the Senate, the-
There's, there's multiple different ways to look at it.
So did the more, did the Mount Laurel Committee know that you were gonna do that, though?
Greg, I talk to people all the time. In fact-
I have an email of you speaking to-
All right, you guys, I really don't wanna do this.
A developer for the, for the Wells Fargo. So we could, we talk to people all the time, you know this.
I'm gonna end this conversation right now between the two of you. Does anybody else wanna speak on the conversation we were having with, about Councilman Boyer?
I would like to speak. I wanted to clarify something, and it was my mistake. I did speak, I did meet with Janice McClary, we had a lovely conversation. She invited me to speak, I was unfortunately, had already planned a vacation with my daughter. And typically, the next in line is either the council president or the pro tem, which would be Council President Allen or Delia. And so, those were, that was sort of my obvious next step. I also really thought that Jamelle was supposed to speak, already being included in the program. Regardless, had I thought to just say, well, this is a natural fit, we should ask Jamelle. We could have resolved, we could have avoided this entire conversation. So my apologies to the community for not thinking quickly on my feet and saying, I would like, I would recommend that you ask Jamelle. So, that said, I am proud to sit next to Jamelle. I do think he is a very good man. I think he's a great friend, and I think he's an incredible father and incredible husband. And he works really hard serving the residents of Summit. And I want to, I watched him hurt, I watched his family hurt. And that's, his, his emotions are valid, as are all of yours. And so I just want everybody to hear that, that when, when I watch a friend or a family member hurt, I get, I get protective. And I'm starting to get a little mama bear about our community. That's why I'm here. I believe Summit is filled with really good people. And I believe that Summit is special because of our diversity. It's one of the things that drew my husband and me to raise our family here. Our diversity should be celebrated with events like Juneteenth and Pride, the Pride Celebration, and AAPI, and Fiesta Latina, and all of the things that we do that are so fantastic and make our community so incredible. So I just, I wanna work together to ensure that the outcome of these events going forward continues to be celebratory and positive. And I like what, I think, I forget who said it, a gentleman said, you know, we should do better. And I think we should do better, and I think we can. So I am asking all of you as community members to help us, bring the community together, celebrate one another, and be kind and respectful to each other.
Reverend Williams and I had a very long conversation together, and we hung up saying we agree to disagree. And that happens with my husband a lot, so that's a good sign, I hope. This was a, an opportunity for our community, sometimes very painful. But you know what, sometimes things happen for a reason. I will defend Councilman Boyer, but I will also defend that people should be here tonight sharing their opinions. And I will defend that we need to continue the march forward. As long as there's humans, there is going to be discrimination, but this community rejects discrimination. We reject it. And it's gonna be imperfect, and we are accountable. All of us, every single one of us, should be accountable for our behavior. We can only control ourselves, we cannot control the world around us, but we can try to influence with the goodness in our hearts. And some people say that there is a separation of church and state. But as a Christian, I look at this crowd every single time from this dais, and that's the prism that I look through. So I'm gonna close on these words. Proverbs 10:12, "Hatred stirs up dissension, but love covers all wrongs." Galatians 5:22 says, "But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Against such things there is no law." And I will commit that we will tighten our processes, that we will communicate better, and that this will not happen again, that I can commit to you and to work on these relationships. So, thank you for coming tonight, you guys, I appreciate it. I'm, we're gonna take a break, and then we're gonna get to city business. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting back to order. One second. We are going to do ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance.
Ordinance number 24-3322, an ordinance amending Chapter 4, General Licensing, Section 4-19, Public Places Where Food and Beverages Are Sold or Served of the Code of the City of Summit.
Councilman Plousky.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance number 24-3322. This ordinance amends Chapter 4, Section 4-19, Public Places Where Food and Beverages Are Sold or Served, to provide that in the event of a change in name or a change in ownership of a food establishment, a new application must be filed and a new license issued prior to selling food under the new ownership or new name. In addition, the holder of the license must notify the city clerk of such change at least 30 days prior to the effective date of such change, or as soon as the change becomes known, if it is to occur within 30 days. We talked at the last meeting about how currently, these, this information will only come to the city upon renewal of a license at the beginning of a calendar year. So this just allows the city to know who's owning different establishments, et cetera, as that ownership changes during the course of a year. And I move this ordinance for-
Hearing.
Hearing.
I second.
Excellent, okay. Hearing is open. Any council comments? Okay, we're, uh, public comments? Okay, we're going to close the hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the second ordinance.
Ordinance number 24-3323, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Ed Property, subsection 7-25.4 Regulations.
Thank you, Council President.
Council Smallwood.
Sorry, I was a little ahead of you. I've read this four times, so I know it by heart. This is ID number 24-3323, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Section, Traffic Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Public, uh, Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-2, dot, 7-25.4 Regulations. This is in the manner of parking and parking lots and garages. This will allow anyone to back into or park, head in to any of our parking spaces as long as the license plate is facing towards the, the right-of-way where the traffic, the, the Traffic Parking Authority officers are able to read the license plate with our license plate readers. If there is no license plate in the front, you will need to drive into the parking spaces so that the license plate is always facing outward, so that our officers can read the license plate. I move to, I move this ordinance for hearing.
And I second.
Excellent, okay. Hearing is open. Council comments? Public comments?
Oh, I think we move voice discussion.
Okay.
One quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. What's the real reason why this is happening? Or true reason?
Councilman?
Andy? I'm kidding. Because my question is-
Actually, the clerk-
I can offer it, Don. So we were reviewing the ordinances, and there's two reasons. The Parking Services Agency can't read the license from their lane of travel, and so this will allow them to do their, their job more efficiently.
That part I get.
And then, while we were looking to amend the ordinance, we noticed that the ordinance did not allow for enforcement of all the garage, both garages. It only allowed enforcement in- in one. So this was also a housekeeping thing.
So I get both of those. I think I'm struggling a little bit with, if you have a license plate on the front of your car, you have to back in, or if you have it only on the back of your car. I can't under, I mean, it's hard on...
The point is, people, people with both plates have the option to...
So people live in Pennsylvania have to pull in. People from Florida have to pull in.
Yeah.
So we're relying on them...
Or people without a backup camera.
So we're relying on the public to park properly, as opposed to just saying, all cars park in headfirst, which we do now. Why not just stay that way?
I can answer that.
I'm not trying to be a pan, I'm not trying to be a jerk about it. But it's been that way, and I'm, I don't want to sound like one of those guys. It's been that way forever, but it worked.
So the, the ordinance, that, the way it was, it was written, was only applied to the Tier Garage.
So you...
So all, all of the other parking garages and parking lots, any tickets that were issued for someone who backed in, even if they had a front license plate, we even had signs that says, that says, "Head in parking only." All of those tickets were, were void, because our, our ordinance didn't apply to those parking lots. Upon further discussion, you know, even within our Parking Advisory Committee here on council, you know, there's a lot of people who have started to back in. Some find it a lot easier because of the cameras, if they have a, a larger truck, or with, with a, like a tow...
Trailer hitch.
Trailer hitch. If they're pulling in, a lot of times, if that, depending on the, on the size of the truck, that, that tow...
Sticks out.
Sticks out. So, I mean, those are just some of the reasons that, that came up during this discussion. And, you know, it just, it came after speaking with, you know, Nicole Sawicki, the director, or the assistant...
Yep, yep, I know who she is.
Right. The acting director of...
By the way, very helpful with the computer.
Yeah. So, you know, from discussions on council, our Park Advisory Committee, we, we didn't necessarily see an issue with it. The biggest issue was the license plate readers. And we're, you know, we're able to figure out the language in the ordinance, and now we're working on the language. Nicole and her team are working on the language that will be easy to read in our parking lots and garages, so that you can back in, or you can drive in, as long as you have a license plate that is facing towards the...
Lane of traffic.
Lane of traffic, thank you.
I understand all that part. I just, I'm just struggling with why we're making it an option. Everybody pull in, and then there's no question about it.
And for, for years, the people have been backing in, and they haven't been able to write their tickets.
And then they, well, then they should get a ticket, because it says, "Pull in headfirst."
But the ordinance...
I get, yeah, I get, yeah, yeah. It's a go around in a circle. All right, thanks.
We're just giving people more options. As long as they have a front license plate.
Motion to close this discussion.
Any other public comments before we do? All right, we're going to close the hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance for final consideration.
Ordinance 24-3322, an ordinance amending Chapter 4, General Licensing, Section 4-19, Public Places Where Food and Beverages Are Sold or Served of the Code of the City of Summit.
Councilman Plousky.
Food and beverage?
Oh, you gotta do it again, yeah.
We just had the hearing on this ordinance. You just moved to...
After having just had the hearing on this ordinance, I move to pass it.
Adopt it.
Adopt it.
Adopt it.
Adopt it.
Yeah. Who's going to second that?
Second.
Okay. All right, wonderful. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Plousky?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please read the second ordinance.
Ordinance 24-3323, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Ed, Education Property, subsection 7-25.4 Regulations.
Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. After here, after just hearing this, hearing, after just having this hearing, I move to adopt this ordinance.
I second.
Excellent. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Plousky?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance.
Ordinance ID number 11375, an ordinance of the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey, adopting new storm water management regulations pursuant to NJAC 7:8, and repealing and replacing Section 26-1 Storm Water Management of Chapter 26, Storm Water Management Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood?
Councilwoman Hamlet?
Sorry, Councilwoman Hamlet, sorry, 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 sorry.
1137, sorry.
Yeah, 11375.
Yep, sorry. This is ordinance 11375, an ordinance of the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey, adopting new storm water management regulations pursuant to NJAC 7:8, and repealing and replacing Section 26-1 Storm Water Management of Chapter 26, Storm Water Management Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit. I would like to move this ordinance for introduction.
Second.
Excellent. Okay, council comments? All right, roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Plousky?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Okay, the hearing will be on Tuesday, July 30th, on to resolutions. Capital Projects and Community Service, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes, this is ID 11379, which will authorize execution of agreements for permanent, for permanent art placement on the Village Green and the City Hall Courtyard for two different art sculptures. I would like to move this resolution...
For adoption?
For adoption, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Okay, great. Council comments?
Yes. So, I was looking at the artwork, and I was thinking to myself, you know, is there, like, is there any other type of artwork that we could, is this, I didn't know the bear, and, you know, I've seen it, you know, before, and I know the, the city's spending money, you know, on this, in the courtyard, and were these the only options?
Or, I'm sorry... Ms. Councilman Boyer, if I could, can I, Mayor, do you want to talk about, or Greg has more familiarity with the art, but I mean, this is, all the art approvals go through, you know, the Public Arts Committee, and it's been very vetted, it's very, Elizabeth, I don't know if you were, or Director Schager?
Yeah, I was going to say, Director Schager certainly can speak to the process better than I can. But I will say that the Arts Committee works pretty hard to identify artists, and that, and they come up with, they identify the artist, and then they commission the artist, or, you know, identify a piece that they like that will come in.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not going to go against the artist, because I'm not much of an art guy. I just, you know, throwing that out there. So maybe I don't know where, you know...
Through, through you, Council President, can I?
Councilman?
So, there's a number of pieces around town that I don't totally love. However, that's the point, right?
Right.
We're talking about public art, right? So you don't have to like it. It's just basically, here we are with some art. And the, the Public Arts Committee, Summit Public Art, which I do believe is paying for these, I don't know that there's city money involved in these at all. The theme of this year, when we met with them, they told us the theme of this year was basically permanent art, and adding a few more permanent spaces around town, so that, so that these, these bears are pretty universally loved by people that reach out to the Art Committee, and they're, they're cool looking, I think. The other one I like a lot as well, because it, they were previously here, the same artist, the same concept, they were here in the courtyard, and it's the same artist who did the Promenade Fountain, which is also another permanent piece of art there. So, this is, these are, I think, two both pretty good pieces, and they may not be everybody's cup of tea, but we're talking about art, and that's a good thing to have in a city, I think. So, thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Smallwood?
Council, thank you, Council President. I guess the, I've seen the bears, and I, I like them, and I get, I'm not astute art collector or anything like that, so I will rely on the experts. My, my only issue that I have is permanent. Is this permanent there forever? Yeah, I mean, because what, I mean, I mean, because down the road, there, you know, there's going to be turnover.
Unless I steal it.
Yeah.
I like the bears.
You know, what, I mean, once there's, I mean, there's obviously going to be turnover on the Art Committee, right? We only have so much land that we can place art. So my, my issue is with the, the permanent, right? In five years, 10 years, what happens if there's a new Art Committee, and they want to put something on the Village Green, and we're running out of space, and we don't have room, and maybe we could find another place for the bears, you know, maybe somewhere in the woods, you know, along a, along a path, you know, I, I just, I just have an issue with the permanent placement of where it is. I don't mind having permanent bears, but I'm just concerned, are we locking ourselves into this one specific spot for these bears?
Do you have any comment? Oh, go ahead. Yeah, you know, let me give Director Schager an opportunity.
Yes, through you, Council President. I could certainly appreciate that, and I think the word permanent there is really intended to mean more than just the cycle that they go on, which is, I forgot, maybe Rosie's a year and a half, or, so, but it obviously can't be permanent, it could break, it could be damaged, so I know it's daunting to think it will be there longer than, than we are. But I also believe that if the Arts Committee approached us and said, hey, we would like to swap that out, we could, and they still have to follow the process that's been adopted. Essentially, they'd either have to move it to somewhere else that's been identified as permanent, or a temporary spot, but then it's back on a cycle. So, so I, I agree with you, but I, I think the map we have that details where there's temporary spots and permanent spots is actually the only spots we have available. It could be amended, we could add or decrease, so, but yes, the one in the courtyard would stay there until either it is damaged or is replaced by the, the Arts Committee. But on a positive note, I think we've had a lot of art at City Hall that maybe, and don't take the opinion of an engineer for art, like ever, that people didn't really like. So I think the glass was very, very well received by, you know, across the board of all demographics, so it's, that's a good one to put there. And the bears, I don't think anyone complained about them at all, so those are, those are good ones.
My, my concern is not the art itself. I mean, I actually do like the bears. I'm just, as long as there's the ability to move them for whatever reason, if they do break, or if they deteriorate, or if five years down the road, the new Art Committee wants to put something else there, and then they can be placed somewhere else and beyond a rotating, but that, but we're, we're designating necessarily that spot for permanent art, not necessarily that particular art. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, it's, it's there with the intent to be there beyond the, the normal cycle.
Right.
And in theory, for as long as it can be, but if they want to swap it out, they would follow the process to just say, we're going to swap it out.
All right, Council, Council President, just one more, one more point. If, what I, what I want to impress upon my colleagues is that the city's not paying for this stuff, and it's being driven completely by a group of volunteers. So if into the future, the money that the, that the Summit Public Art is able to raise is not there, or if there is a group, no longer a group of people who is really dedicated to getting art to replace the non-permanent art, then it goes away, and it fades away. I think what's happening here is, we should think about this, is future-proofing the art, and that there will be art beyond funding sources, beyond volunteer capability, that it's there. Thank you.
Director Schager, who maintains it?
It will be the city once we take it over, yes. So it would be like the Sentinel Tree down on Broad Street, which every few years, we hit it with some solution, because it does get impacted by the rain, so comparable. It's the same, I don't want to use the word, I think it's diochromatic glass, but it's, so we have it at the Promenade that we're ready, I don't want to say experienced at maintaining, but we already have one to maintain, so it would be similar, it would be us, but, yeah.
Are we going to end up owning the art, if it's permanent, like technically permanent?
Do we own the art?
Yes.
We do own the art. So then we need to put that in our risk liability stuff.
Yeah, and that's, that's all been done.
So if we try to sell it, we have to go out for auction.
Unless it has mold, and then you could just dispose of it.
We didn't even, we didn't even get it yet.
I know, but...
We're trying to sell it.
I'm always trying to plan.
And I, I just want to clarify, I, I have no issue with the art. I, I just, it's the whole permanent thing that bothers me, is if something else wants to be replaced there by the Art Committee in the future, but you explained it, and they can still replace that with something else, they just go through the same process.
I like the man at the transfer, at the train station with the, the briefcase, remember him? I like him. I drove by him the first time, and I went, and I said, he's not real.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
I mean, I would like to just, Greg is correct, in that, you know, this is obviously done through Public Arts, but there is a cost to the city. So, you know, putting, we will be using DPW workers, we're putting a concrete platform out there, we're putting an electroconduit, so this is definitely costing the taxpayers some money, and I, but I do agree with Greg that, you know, this is funded mostly by, 98% by Summit Public Arts. But I did want to say that through this project, we're definitely spending some money. Not a ton of money, but we, you know, we will be spending a little bit of money through our DPW workers, and some electrical work, and a concrete pad, and whatever else it is. But I think we should move on, because it's a late night, and I think we're all about putting this art and getting home. That's my last comment.
I like the art.
Okay. Did I do public comment on this?
Through you, Council President. I, just a quick question. Is it inappropriate to ask the mayor's opinion on this? I just wanted to know.
It's not inappropriate.
Oh, okay. About the art?
I like the bears.
Okay.
I like the diochromatic glass that we had here before. I, there are some pieces I don't love. As Greg said, art is, you know, the beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Right.
And so, part of the fun of art is, we can talk about how we like or don't like something, and we can dig into that sometime. Not here, not now.
The permanency of it, like...
Um, no, I, I think it's, you know, we don't need 700 permanent pieces of art, because that, where will we put them? But I think it's appropriate to, to sort of, as Greg said, future-proof the installations to some, to some level.
If I could, through you, Council President, so when we converted these two locations, which were temporary art locations, so we didn't actually increase the number, I think the last increase we did was when we added the park line, five or six years ago, so we just really converted temporary to permanent ones, so.
All right, great. Any public comments? Okay, great. We're going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilwoman Hamlet, your second resolution.
Yes, this is ID 11373, declaring a vacancy, as discussed in closed session tonight, in the Department of Community Services, the Division of Public Works, Sanitation Unit 1, full-time sanitation truck driver, would like to move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Okay, council comments? Any public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three.
This is ID 11360, this is appointing Housing Authority Member. This was discussed in pending closed session discussion. We will be introducing or recommending Peter Kane for the Housing Authority Member. I'd like to move this resolution for adoption.
Okay, council comments?
I second.
Did you have a second?
I second.
I'm sorry, sorry. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet, number four?
ID 11377, this is to, as discussed in closed session, appoint an Affordable Housing Committee Member, Liz Newell. I would like to move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Okay, any council comments?
Just only want to say that Liz Newell is, this is amazing that she is volunteering her time. I, I think the world of, she was on other committees and everything else, I think this is going to be a great addition to, to our city, and our volunteers. is gonna be a great addition to, to our city and our volunteers.
I agree, she was on the zoning board for many years, so. Okay. Public comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Safety and Health, Councilman Boyer.
This is resolution ID number 11372, declaring a vacancy within the Fire Department. Pending our closed session discussion, I'd like to move this for adoption.
Second.
Council comments? Public comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Boyer, your second resolution?
This is resolution ID number 11381, appoint two police officers, pending closed session discussion. I would like to move this for adoption, however, I would like to say that we are adding two amazing police officers, Robert Pons and Uriel Castillo. Robert is a current Chatham Borough Police Officer and Uriel Castillo is from Patterson. And I met Uriel, man, it's almost maybe a month and a half, two months ago, and I couldn't, I couldn't be happier with him. The first thing that he said, it was like reading my mind, he said, I can't wait to start because I want to walk around downtown and meet everybody and going into the shops. And I saw Bob was just like, oh, this guy's amazing, you know? So, you know, it's good to get some, some, some new spirit downtown. I think this is really, these two guys are really what we were, we were, these two officers are really what we were looking for, so I'm very happy with that. So, I'd like to introduce this resolution for adoption.
Second.
So, council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we're going to vote on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm gonna pull something out.
Yep. What would you like to pull out, Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'm gonna pull, Paul's looking at me, the, the firehouse change order, because I just have a question, sorry. The, I just want to pull that one out.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, I just have concerns about the, I forget what, what number it is, the Fire Headquarters Project, I've been going through back and forth with Chief and Bimbo about this today. I'm just having a hard time, I know the drip pan is $5,500 and I'm having a hard time, I think the reason I'm having a hard time is because a change order for me means that the project has changed. And when we got the original specs of the firehouse, I feel like it should have been included, because what has changed in the project that requires the drip pan and why didn't they catch that when they were building and doing the specs for the firehouse? And I think I mentioned to you today, I'd like to see why it's costing so much, I know it's custom, but it's just, I don't know, it's just not making sense to me. And I'm sorry, I know it's late, but I just, it's a lot of money, so tell me why it's so much money.
The, the reason we had to do it, it wasn't caught in the plans because it's not something that's normally done. And the as-bills are always a little different than what the plans are, so once the electrical service stuff was in and all the conduit and piping net was above it, some of it is for the electrical systems themselves, some of it is for drainage from the roof, plumbing and all. The electrical inspectors thought that the condensation that might occur in there would drip down on the electric panels and cause a problem. So, it wasn't originally in the plans, once it was built, it was realized that we needed it. Because everything is already in place, it all has to be fabricated on-site, so it's not like you just go out and buy a plastic drip pan and put it in there. And it's not just the drip pans itself, it's then the piping that has to come down the walls and direct the water outside, so.
And that's not something that would be to code, because, well, I'm just understanding, so the drip pan is for the condenser?
Well, the, the condensation that would come off the, the pipes that are in there.
But why are they overly electric, electrical stuff? That's what I'm just trying to understand.
Like I said, until everything's in place, you can't really see that. When, when they draw the plans, they show pathways from the panels to wherever the, the electric is going, but they don't actually see where all the piping is. So, once, once all that conduit is put in place and they realize that it was actually over all the, the panels, it, it just, it spurred the need for it. So, we didn't realize that until the electrical inspector went.
Through you, Council President. Chief, wasn't, wasn't the issue that the Union County had a different requirement? Like, it was inspected, then the county came in and said, no, we have a different requirement?
Not for the drip pans. The, the county requirement was for the drop curb at the street. That's not anything that's required by code, but it is required on the county road, so we didn't know that until they came and reviewed it. So, it's separate, it's on the same change order, but there are separate issues.
Thank you.
Okay. Great.
Most expensive drip pan we'll ever approve. You're worth it.
I've never put a drip pan in, so.
I heard him said funny about electrical.
Yeah, I just, like I said, I, I, change orders, I'm just funny about because I know we're not getting a bigger anything and I, I think it should all, all this stuff should always be caught in the beginning, so that's one where I was just sort of stood out to me today.
Yeah, and, and the huge scale of it, it's, it's really a minor thing that, you know, something like that. And again, once stuff is built and put in place, you realize that other issues come up with it, and that's, that's one of these cases where, you know, even the, when they were building it, the electricians and all, the plumbers, they, they didn't see a need for it, but once the inspector came and said, you know, this, this could cause a problem, it's not something we could do without, so we really don't even have a choice, otherwise we won't get an electrical inspection.
Yep, I know, thanks for explaining it.
Through you, Council President.
Thank you.
You know, Councilwoman Hamlet's detail on this is, is spot-on because I think there's not that much more money that we could, you know, be using on this project, right? So, you know, we, we have to be very detailed about the change orders and additional fees, I mean, we're coming up towards the end, right? There's not, there's not a lot of money we can be taking out of the pot, so, you know, we, we, I'm not saying that we need to be overly concerned, but we need to really scrutinize where we are right now with this, so.
Council President, through you. A project to this size, we normally would have done seven or eight percent contingency and we chose to do it with three, and part of that went to section 20 costs, so we're really dealing with two percent contingency. So, if we are up against the fact that we're coming close on the top of our budget, it's because we allowed ourselves such little wiggle room because we did so much upfront and we did a lot of design work, a lot of work ahead of time so that we didn't have to come across change orders. So, if there is only a little bit of money left, it's because we only really allowed ourselves a little bit of money and we've been pretty good keeping that in check.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilman Barton, did you want to say something?
I want to say something about something else, if we're done with the drip pan.
Yeah, we're done with the drip pan.
Thank you. We have, we have a bunch of chapter 159 adjustments in here. So, on the 4th of July, a dear friend of mine lost her son to addiction. And that is not a disease that affects a person, it also affects a family, it also affects a community. This community now, with all these adjustments, now has over $600,000 from the National Opioid Settlement Grants. So, there are very specific requirements as to how the city can disburse that money. I would like to make the pitch that the Administrative Policies Committee can set up a mechanism for first, understanding how it can be spent and then, secondly, probably having to involve nonprofits in the community in order to disburse that money in a way that, that makes us a stronger community, better able to fight this insidious disease. So, that's all I'll say about that.
So, we do have interns this summer working on that exact discussion.
I mean, we, we also had a meeting, I think I was at that meeting, with the Mayor, Rich, the city administrator regarding the opioid money. One of the things that came to my attention was that a lot of the opioid money that we had from the last few years, we haven't spent yet. So, I approached city administrator Rogers, Tammy, you might be able to opine on how much money we haven't spent so far?
None of it.
We haven't spent any of it, so.
We have all this sitting there, we have to do something.
Right, right, absolutely. So, I think our, our initial meeting was, was really, really good and I think that's why it's great that Michael has the interns working on it and it's really, really important. I'm sorry to hear about your, your friend Greg.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Great. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
You did that already. You just need to vote.
And now I need a second. And now I need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Councilmember comments? Anybody?
I just have one and I promise it'll be quick. I'd like to put back on the agenda and don't be mad at me, the loading zone from last meeting. I want to take another look at it and maybe we'll have to put it back on the agenda, but I just want Director Schreger to look at it. I, he was out last meeting and I didn't have a chance to look at it. I went out again and looked at it and I received about, I don't know, 40 pages from a resident that I spoke to recently and I, I think the chief of police might have some information regarding it, but I do have some concerns about the loading zone that I didn't have before, maybe I'm wrong, but I just want to have another discussion about it and I might be wrong, that's okay. I think it's a tough intersection and the reason I think that is, one of our resident's daughters actually got into a car accident there this year, now there was snow involved, but the, the loading zone is so close to the crosswalk that when you're coming out, it's near Harquell, and when you're coming out, if, if there's a, if the, there's a car at the loading zone and you're, and you're, if somebody coming in to that Glen, what is it, Glen?
Glenwood Place.
Glenwood Place. It's really, really tight and I, I didn't realize it two weeks ago and I'm realizing it now and I just, I'm just asking that we take another look at it, so I don't know how we do that, but.
Well, you can do it two ways, you can send it back to committee and have them, because I think it came out of CPPS.
Yeah, they just, I don't think you guys had this information when you did it, so.
No, we did it, but through you, Council President. We, we didn't have that information, but this was a, a larger kind of loading zone appropriation, per se. We were gonna put loading zones all over downtown, so if there's an issue with this one, it looks like there's a historical, I saw the email, we could, you know, take a look at it. I don't know, Erin, I don't know if you, you know anything about this or?
Well, I think the other thing we have to make sure is that people, like, there was, there was a car parked there last night for like two hours, like, it's a loading zone and it just, it's not gonna work if.
So, through you, Council President, the communication that from the resident came in and after reviewing it, I referred it as a DAR to the Safety Committee and copied the Parking Services Director because it, it originally, the organs came out of Parking Services. So, I believe it's been referred to the committee already for review.
So, through you, Council President. Erin, I don't think you need to respond right now, we'll, we'll take a look at it in committee.
Do you want a copy of that? Erin, I'll send everything to you.
Through you, Council President, I believe Councilmember Hamlet sent, which came from resident Colangelo, so, who does have a pretty keen eye on the street, so, but I think just moving forward as we might be proposing some others, I mean, he's a valuable resource, we could just ask him for some input, but, no, that's fine, we could, we could take a look at it.
I do want to, Council President, you know, we did have Lieutenant Daley take a look at this from a safety perspective. There used to be two actual parking spots there with meters and when we took out the meters, the, what part of the history was they, they took out the actual meter itself and then people, people were actually just parking there for free. And so, that's what made it a, rather than making it a loading zone at that time, they just made it no parking. I did drive by there today, I did take a video. From a safety perspective, you know, Lieutenant Daley did approve this, it is set back far enough from the crosswalk. I also did a, asked Lieutenant Daley if he would do a search, if there's been any pedestrian in the last decade issues in that area. There were a couple of accidents, one was, two of them were box cars backing up into another car, but had nothing to do with that particular space. And then there was another, a couple of other accidents in that area, but not in that particular spot. Glenwood Avenue was listed as a street of interest or in that area, but it wasn't in that particular spot itself. And so, that's the reason why we felt comfortable making that a one-car loading, unloading zone and it is, it is already striped.
Okay. All right. Well, they'll be, you'll be looking at it again.
I just have a question. Whose property is that right there?
City's.
Yeah. It is City's.
I will say, when there's a truck there, it is, it does create a blind spot and when you try to turn right, it is, you have to go around the parked truck and if you have oncoming traffic, you don't see it. So, it is a little tricky.
Turning onto Glenwood or Springfield?
Yeah, so if you're taking a right onto Glenwood from Springfield Avenue and there's a big truck there, you have to take a wide turn around that truck and when you have oncoming traffic, it can be dangerous.
We, I mean, with all due respect, we have that same, we have that problem everywhere where, where we have restaurants and we have tractor-trailers parked on the street doing unloading, because we just don't have the space and, you know, unfortunately, you know, I, I know Councilwoman Hamlet has brought this up several times, on Maple Street, you know, by the, the Forest Parking Lots, there's just nowhere else for them to park and unload their, their trucks, you know, and we have several restaurants that are there. Where else are they gonna park?
I think we can find spots. I think they can go, I think they can go in that parking garage, I think, or we could think about, the reason they can't pull in near Barbacoa is because they can't, if they're coming in the other way, they can't get under that bridge, so maybe we have to make it a one-way the other way or tell them they gotta pull, they can't keep parking outside Barbacoa because it's, it's a complete disaster, so I, I, we have to figure out something.
Yeah, I mean, through you, Council President, I mean, that's the, that's the point, we've been talking about it in safety, about loading zones all throughout downtown, right, so that these, these trucks and cargo, you know, utility vans could be able to park and unload their goods and services. But the one by Glenwood, I, I thought I heard Council Smallwood say a loading zone for a car. Did you say car?